About matters that where our interests and needs and concerns kind of overlap. I feel like the main purpose of this meeting every year is really just to maintain relationships and build relationships and talk about things. You know, we share, we share a lot of the same concerns. So I don't think we need to do introductions. We've all got our nameplates and I think that we've kind of introduced ourselves, but so maybe we can dive right in. We've got four items on the agenda and then I think we can just make it an open discussion as well. But the four items on the agenda are talking about transportation, transit, RFTA, and the letter that we sent to CDOT and just what the county's thinking about that. I had a check in with Nathan Lindquist from CDOT today. He was just making calls to I think the people that were on the committee that put that together and so I can share an update there. Then we've got a discussion about housing and specifically about the Housing Coalition. I think we're curious about Garfield County's thoughts on that and we'd love to give you some updates on our work for affordable housing in Carbondale. Carbondale Rodeo has generated a lot of discussion this year at such a popular event and all those changes that, you know, it's one of those interesting ones where it's in the county geographically, but it's a event that town of Carbondale does a lot of work with and manages that facility that's our facility out there. And then the temporary mill levy reduction. So we've heard a lot of concerns about the property tax increase due to increased valuations. And so that's one that the county added. So maybe we'll kick it off with kind of the transit discussion. The letter was in the packet that we all sent to CDOT that was signed. I really appreciated that Garfield County signed on to that. Tom joined one of those kind of subcommittee meetings and we had, we got it signed by every jurisdiction, every municipality in the county as well as the county itself. So I don't have any specific questions there, but just kind of wanted to open it up to conversation around that, how the county's feeling about that process. You know, the gist of it is that those growth projections, I just had those up on my screen, show that Garfield County's population is estimated to grow by 40% by 2040. So in less than 20 years, we're going to add over 20,000 people. And the number of jobs is also projected to grow by 40%. And so we started to talk about the fact that, and what this is really about is talking about the fact that it's not all about up valley, down valley commuting patterns anymore. There's a lot going on in Garfield County with us on this end and parachute on the other end and everything in between. And that if we don't plan for that future, we're going to be stuck. The current highway network can't handle that kind of growth. So that's what when Nathan Lindquist from CDOT called today, he was just asking what we hoped to get out of that process and what we talked about is that the, my hope is that we kind of build consensus with the county, with the public and with the municipalities that that's a future. What does, what does that look like? What does it look like in different scenarios? What does it look like if we do nothing? What does traffic and mobility look like in 20 years with 86,000 people in the county? And then what are our alternatives? There's a, you know, do you expand transit networks down that way? Do you widen highways? Do you do other creative things to get people moving? And then that hopefully will help all of our communities make some decisions about what we want that to look like. And you know, doing nothing would be a decision, right? It would be that that's, that's what we chose was whatever that forecast is. So with that, I would just open it up to thoughts from, from our board, from, from your board about that process. Or about those forecasts or, or anything else related to transit and transportation in Garfield County as Garfield County grows.
Oh, I'll jump in.
And just make sure your light, your little red light is your indicator. It's on just to make sure people can hear us online as well.
Great. I'm on. All right. Movie star now.
Thanks, Frank.
I'll just jump in and say, you know, we, I'll speak for all three and if I'm wrong, I'll get my chain yanked, I guess. We want people to work where they live. That's the utopia, right? Now that doesn't always happen, but I think we as governments need to encourage that as much as we can. We want to avoid the proliferation, I guess you might say, of the bedroom community type situation that just, that's not a good deal. And we want good, strong communities. And part of that is if you live where you work, that gives you more time. If you have to commute from rifle to Aspen to work every day, that's a drain. It's just, it's just a drain. It's, it's, it's hard. It's hard on your family. It's hard on you. It's hard on everybody. So when I look at that problem, that's when I say we have to try. Whatever we can do is to have people live and work in the same community. That being said, being in education, we never made a whole lot of money as teachers. And my heart goes out to those people right now who are teachers. But you throw in whoever, I mean, it's not just teachers, it's whatever. And it's hard to find a place to live. I know I'm not telling you anything in Carbondale on a teacher's salary. Good luck with that. Ditto Glenwood. Ditto Newcastle. Still getting rough. Rifle, almost there. You can't buy a house on a teacher's salary. So you have two teacher salaries, marginal, that you're going to buy a house. So those are problems that we have to face and all the municipalities have to face. But I think if we work together, it's going to be a lot easier to try and accomplish something than everybody trying to do their own thing. So that's kind of where I, I say is we have to learn to work together on this or it's just not, it's not going to work. The forecast of growing by 40%, I'm not sure. I believe that. I think there's all kinds of things that are happening in this world that could preclude that or could hasten it. But if we're not ready for it, the quality of life in our valley will suffer greatly. And I don't want that. I don't think anybody wants that. So those are real problems that I think your board, our board, all the boards need to get, come together and work on this. And it's, it's, I don't think there's a panacea of a solution. We do this, it's going to take, no, it's going to take a lot of things. So I guess what I'm saying, we need to work together. That's where I'm at.
And I'll add some transportation, please. I don't think we're even six dollars, six percent far off because you take, you take 10% a year for two decades and not a year, 10% a decade. And we're at 62,000 now. It gets you to 70 to 76,000. So I don't know that those numbers are that, that far off. As far as transportation, we've been paying for transportation on the hogback, which is Glenwood Springs to rifle. And really we pay for the Newcastle to rifle piece because rifle and silt aren't in, in RFTA. And then we, we've been doing that as long as I've been a commissioner. So that's been for 12 years. The Pats parachute area transportation system, which is more of a, I guess, a van system, small bus runs out of bounds, Mason parachute back into rifle. And we, we split the cost of that with parachute. So we've, we have, you know, we're up around $900,000 a year and it would make me happy as far as a budget guy on, on the Board of County Commissioners to see a district that we could fund itself and could improve, improve and add more routes and so forth. So I think it's, it's looking forward to working together and we'll see. And you know, and we've got to have rifles, rifle, silt, parachutes buy-in, you know, so. Is that joining RFTA? Is that setting up your own transportation? I think those are some of the questions we'll ask. Set up your own transportation district, contract out to RFTA, contract out to parachute, who knows?
You left out one transportation system and that's the senior.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't talk about the traveler.
That's extra money as well. That's for the seniors and the, and the disadvantaged and handicapped. So we, we do that as well.
And that puts us, that puts us well over a million dollars in transportation costs. Well, over a million dollars. Well, not all back to RFTA, but because some of it goes to parachute.
Yeah. And the housing issue, Mr. Mayor, council has always said the growth needs to be where the utilities are and that's within the municipalities. And the municipalities have to accept that. That's where the growth is going to be. That's where your transportation is going to be, not in the rural areas, not outside the, in the unincorporated area. So we've always said, you want growth and you want housing, you put in your municipalities because that's where it belongs because that's where your services are. And if you don't, you compound the problems of transportation and utilities and all kinds of other issues that come along with social problems. So we will help the municipalities grow, but we're going to try and keep it so it's not overflowing and having the urban sprawl, if you see it's on the front range in Grand Junction, in Montrose, Steamboat Springs and on through. We're trying not to do that in honor of one of the agreements that we had with Carbondale and Glenwood. And that is the urban growth, the urban growth boundaries stay, green spaces and not develop them. We need you to honor them as well and take in all of that population. If you don't, you're going to have the sprawl and the cities are going to grow together, just like on the front. Yeah. So yeah, we got to work together. We also have to understand that there's given tape on that side.
Yeah, no, that all makes sense. And I think we're all on the same page as far as that goes. You can see the development that we've been funneling toward our core as you drive in today around the roundabout and those areas. And you know, we take some pushback for that. It's not everybody's ideal of what they thought a small town would look like in the future. But it's the, it's the most affordable free market housing that can be built is, is multifamily units like that in the town core. Like you said, where the, where the utility and infrastructure costs are lower. Other thoughts on the kind of transportation planning, transit future from anybody?
We have a question. What's CDOT's lead time?
They don't have a calendar yet for that. Yeah, I guess we're taking questions.
A comment, would it be possible to offer citizens who are paying double taxes, it seems, well, this next year, a stipend for opening up their homes to a teacher and maybe their partner?
Yeah, that could certainly be explored. Yeah. I mean, maybe just a, a closing thought on the, the transportation. I think we all agree that in a, as a, in a utopian world, as Commissioner Sampson said, the, the housing and the jobs would all be right where everybody can, can get to them. What we're finding is that sometimes people choose to live in other areas, you know, other than where they work. And a lot of people choose the, the more open spaces, the warmer climate, those kinds of things that they find in Western Garfield County. So we're all about trying to approve housing here that's close to jobs. But I think we're still with that growth, going to see a lot of need for movement. And so I just look forward to those conversations. And I think bringing CDOT in is sort of a mutual facilitator with a lot of expertise, obviously, and how to get people around. Talking to Nathan Lindquist again today, the planner for CDOT, he said outside the front range, they kind of consider the I-70 corridor in Garfield County to be the most urban-like kind of traffic pattern that they see. So it makes sense for them to, they don't typically do this. It was a different thing for us to ask them to come in and facilitate a process for one county. And they kind of have to be careful that they don't get that request from every county. But they said, you know, the fact that they've done a big investment through that grant in the transportation hub with busting in Grand Junction and in rifle and in Glenwood Springs, kind of building off that and analyzing those problems with us. So I look forward to that process. Yeah, Lenny.
So a big part of our responsibility too is preserving the culture of Carbondale, right? That's been longstanding. And as we'll see coming up here shortly, there's the WeCycle program coming in, which is very unique. It's different than other municipalities because it'll be year round and the way that it's presented physically will look very much Carbondale and not so industrial. So we're excited about that. And that's one way to solve the last mile situation with support from RFTA and so forth. So that's something that we're looking forward to and fits our community in what it needs to do and is asking for. So those are some of the options that we've been exploring as well as really focusing on the infill rather than the sprawl. And as Ben said, yeah, we get a lot of pushback about that, but you know, people want housing and you can't have it both ways. So yeah. Thank you.
Going to be really interested in watching how that develops.
Okay.
And how you go about that, because I think that is, that's going to be a very big challenge for you. But I support you in that. I think that's, that's part of the big, I think that's a big piece of the puzzle in trying to make the best of both worlds, I guess, is, is the way I want to put it. So I'm going to be watching that very closely.
Thank you. Will, we'll have eyes in the back of our head too.
You will.
Any other thoughts before we move on to housing? Chris?
I would just make sure. Sorry.
As a guy, just make sure your mic's on.
I was really liked Mike's point beginning about trying to get people to work where they live. I think that's, I'm totally on the same page with you there. And you know, I've been floating the idea, I don't know, you know, we're trying to build an affordable housing project between us and the main street. And you know, one of the, I think, goals we've been tossing around is how do we try to make one of the requirements that you work in town, you know, so you're not, because, because there's been a lot of, there's been a little bit of consternation of like, oh, Carbondale's just building lifty housing or something for somebody who's going to go up to Aspen. And just as you're saying, we would have the same, you know, we have had a long, long time issue of sort of bedroom communities and, and that does, I think that does leach some quality of life from, from the community and cohesion and such. So I think, I think I totally agree with that. And I think we're, on the other hand, I also see where you're coming from. And I guess for me, it is a key of like, how do we try to think about giving RFTA a leg up on the traffic, you know, because if you can make the bus faster than the car, then the bus becomes a hell of a lot more attractive and then people will take it. It makes it better for people in the cars too. And so I'm just curious about, I would just, I, you know, that's a sort of a Glenwood thing, but you know, there's sort of been talk about this corridor off of Grand Avenue potentially for buses and, you know, potentially a node there where they redevelop the wastewater treatment center. And I just would encourage you all to, you know, keep your eyes on that as well. Because I think that's a getting through Glenwood is really the, the bottleneck for everybody and.
Going into Aspen. I mean, if you get to the airport, it takes you another half hour to get to downtown Aspen.
Yeah, exactly. But for our purposes, we'll just forget things.
Most of us are there than anywhere else.
Yeah, exactly. And I've been advocating for the exact same thing up there. Give the bus a leg up on the, on the traffic. And so, and if you can make it, if you can make it just that much more attractive to people on time wise, then suddenly the, the calculus in people's heads shifts from, oh, the bus, which is, everyone has this vision of the bus of being somehow inferior to their private vehicle. You get to choose your own music or whatever and blah de blah on your own vehicle. But I don't know if we can, you know, sustain that kind of resource intensity and, you know, into the future. And so I just think trying to make the, the transit systems work a little bit better as we, I think is a good way to go.
Look at the transit system of RTD up in, up in Denver and all of the light rail and all of the buses. They're cutting service off because nobody uses them because it's too expensive to run. Yes, it's convenient, but nobody's using it.
Well, I think we're blessed.
But will they use it? They still haven't found that magic formula to get people to do it. It's a cultural change. That's what it amounts to.
I guess so. I would say we're blessed though, in that we have one line. We only have to do one line basically, you know? There they have to make a net of bus lines to spread out across all the sprawl they've created. And here at least we're confined by geography into one line. So I think that helps our budget in the, in the long run to keep, you know, keep it at least anyway. But that's, that's enough probably on that.
But I just want to jump on the one point you mentioned, support you a hundred percent when, when you're going to build this and so on. Giving, giving the people that have jobs here and I'm, that's good. That's good. I support that. And we need to encourage, encourage that.
And we still need to do some research on what kind of, you know, it's a, going to be a, you know, a limbo for us to try to figure out all different kinds of grants and things and what grant requires this from what federal, you know, jumble of words or whatever. So they're going to have different requirements and are they going to, you know, require us to, you know, how do you, are they defining that as a discrimination of some kind or so? I think it'd be.
Housing Act.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. But I still think there, if we could find some way to incentivize people who've been in the community for a long time and work in the community or, you know, that seems fair to me.
I think we were all surprised by the city of Glenwood Springs, traffic study and job studying. And the Carbondale, at least eight, one, six, two, three zone is, is a major employer. It's not, you know, so you're not necessarily a bedroom community anymore. I mean, you are for some people, but.
Yeah.
That was surprising. That was one of the, that was, that was a takeaway for me.
Yeah, that was my biggest aha from that transportation, origin, destination study that I think it was about 50% of the traffic going through Grand Avenue every day. Its destination is our zip code. And like you said, Tom, it's not all downtown Carbondale. That includes Cattle Creek and some of Missouri Heights and the surrounding area. But it's, that's what really got that conversation started was that origin and destination study showing that the old paradigm of everybody's going to Aspen for work is, is not accurate anymore. A lot of people still are. There's still a lot of jobs up there. But there's also so much movement in the county that we can't just point our fingers up valley anymore and say, this is their problem to solve. We've got our own challenges. So that's, hopefully that CDOT discussion will help. Marty?
Yeah, sorry I was late to the party. I had to work at my other job. One thing over the last 10 years, the traffic and the amount of people commuting to Glenwood where I'm working now, they're coming from silt, they're coming from Newcastle, they're coming from rifle, they're coming from Meeker, Grand Junction, yes. And the amount of traffic on 70 coming this way in the morning towards Glenwood, horrendous. I was in silt one, one morning and it took me like 45 minutes to get to Glenwood.
If you're driving west, it's not too bad.
Yeah.
But everybody, and you just see the steady stream. If it's early, even five o'clock in the morning, it's just, there it is.
That same way coming here.
Am I in Denver? Where am I at?
I see all the traffic coming from Aspen, this all here, heading down to Glenwood and further west. So as much as we can encourage not only more use of mass transit, but getting the mass transit systems to possibly work together. And when I say that, I mean, like the, the Eagle Mass Transit System along with our mass transit system.
Eagle doesn't come through the canyon. They stop at Gipsen.
Right, I know. But we have people coming from rifle and silt who are going to Val.
Yes.
You know, so if, I'm not saying it's definitely possible, but something at least worth exploring.
Okay, I might move us into the housing discussion. We could talk about that all night, but we'll, we'll limit it. Just an update on, we included in the packet, our Carbondale's really first housing plan. We've had a housing policy for over 20 years, I think. It's inclusionary housing where, you know, right now I believe it's 20% of new development has to be deed restricted, affordable. And there we do have the Carbondale employees get priority because it's not subsidized by the, the federal tax credit. So we can make it whatever we want pretty much. But now we have a, a plan with some goals and we're exploring some other strategies because we're seeing that that's not bringing enough units to market right now. And that a lot of the development is, is apartments rather than, than homeownership opportunities. And what we're finding is that, like Chris said, we're, we're working on this project at Town Center, which, you know, around Thunder River Theater there, just across, just across the street. That's going to be a couple more years in the making, but it's going to be somewhere between 40 and 60 rentals with Art Space as our development partner. But we need to do more. And so we're really leaning on this regional housing coalition to help us do more. They're, they've got a grant right now for technical assistance where they're analyzing all of our codes and all the member jurisdictions and making some recommendations about, you know, how do we make it easier to build affordable and attainable housing? And they're going for a grant for some buy downs where you can lower the cost of a free market unit and bring it into the housing, the affordable housing stock and keep it affordable forever and down payment assistance and things like that. So I was curious what the commission is thinking about with housing and specifically with the coalition? If that's something that you all are considering joining at any point in the future.
Can I start? Can I start with an answer? Well, we, we, like you, we, we've had inclusionary housing as well. It's, it's only in the Royford Valley. It's one in, it's one in 10 after 15 units. Minor subdivisions in Garfield County are administrative review. So somebody wants to divide into three lots, up to three lots. They can do that without going in front of the Board of County Commissioners or the Planning Commission. ADUs up to 1,200 square feet are used by right. You can just, you can get a building permit for that. You just change this one. A business, a business that's on one acre or more, they can, up to an acre, they can add four ADUs or workforce housing units and one additional for each quarter, quarter acre of land. We've supported Habitat for Humanity. We just put in $200,000 into PD Commons. We are, we, we support Garfield County Housing Authority, $100,000 in that. And Garfield County Housing Authority hands out the HUD vouchers for rental vouchers also. They, they manage all of our affordable housing in unincorporated Garfield County. We transferred $3 million of HUD dollars to CHAF, Colorado Housing Finance Authority for first time home buyers. So you can help with that down payment. We've just put in zoning for attainable workforce housing where in the high residential zone, you can start at 5,000 square feet per lot to bring down the cost of, of lots. We also just, just knew we waived traffic impact fees and also building fees for affordable housing. So incentivize that as well. We all, as Commissioner Sampson said, we, we, we're practicing what we preach as far as moving our jobs down valley, our, our employees. And we have two campuses, a rifle campus and a Glenwood Springs campus. And we're trying to move more and more jobs to the rifle area because the housing's affordable there and, and people won't have to come through South Canyon. See, I think that's about it. We've, oh yeah, Sunnyside Retirement Home. It's not, we don't own Sunnyside, but we're putting, I'm not sure what it is. It's almost a million dollars into Sunnyside this year.
They manage it. The, the citizens own the property and what have you. We're doing some improvements to the property, et cetera. And then the Housing Authority also manages several of the senior housing projects that are down valley. And so we do that from parachute to silt and they assist on that as well.
And I talked about transportation. That's, that's a part of housing. I mean, it just is in this. And we're about 900,000 with traveler, a million dollars that goes back into RFTA and parachute area transportation. And then we've supported private business. We've got one private business in, in rifle. That's building affordable homes, equal dwellings. And they're getting homes out in the rifle area for $300,000 or under. And also if Habitat's talked about becoming a housing manufacturer, they've talked to the city of rifle about that. We'd be happy to see that as well for affordable housing. So we're not, not members of the Housing Coalition. And I've heard just talking to your one, one of your two counselors is not here that, that's being, you know, that's being pushed by, being pushed by up valley concerns. I mean, I know. That's being, you know, that's being pushed by, being pushed by Up Valley Concerns. I mean, I know Carbondale and Glenwood are part of that. But uh, you know, we, there, there's, there's affordable and attainable housing in Garfield County, but it's, it's all. Newcastle West. I mean. Unless, unless there's subsidies. And, and I, I guess you're, you guys in the Housing Authority are looking at going after grants to buy down uh. Uh, houses, which is great if you can help. You know, if you can help get somebody into a house and make it affordable. Into perpetuity, then that's, that's great. But uh. Right now, you don't, the west end of the county and Garfield County are not members of that.
Right, and you, you know, thank you, Tom, for that summary. It's incredible. All the things that you listed that you guys are doing. So clearly you're being really proactive on it. I would just say, I don't personally feel like the housing coalition is being driven by Up Valley Concerns. It's really like, they have a. You know, they have APSHA, right? The Aspen Picken County Housing Authority. They have a dedicated. Revenue source. They have a really strong housing program up there. It's not doing enough, but it's doing more than. Um, than the rest of us are able to do because of that revenue source. So I actually see the housing coalition as being driven by. Us kind of in the mid-valley, like Basal, um, Carbondale and Glenwood who don't have. The luxury of a dedicated revenue source and, and, and a huge revenue source. What was it, Lauren? I saw it on your. Thirty-one million dollars that their um, real estate transfer tax brought into their housing fund last year, which is three times our. General fund that covers everything that we do.
When you again get now and it's unconstitutional in reference to.
Right.
Transfer act to the constitution.
Right, right.
Only seven communities that have that in Colorado.
Yeah, so, uh, but I guess my main point is just that. Um, we see the housing coalition. It, it, it actually took some convincing to get the Up Valley communities to join, just so we're clear on that history. Because we were, we were right there at the start and we said, we need something regional. We can't do this on our own. Little Carbondale is just never going to have the revenue to. To really make a dent in the housing problem. So we at least wanted to join with Basal and Glenwood. That was kind of the, the first conversations. And then it sort of opened up, who else is interested? And um, yeah, I would say, I, I would just hope that you keep an open mind to it and that as conversations go on and, and that. Organization develops, um, there might come a time when it makes sense to join and, and there might not.
Just let me jump in when Dave Mylar came and, and uh. Gail Schwartz. And I said. I'm going to say out of the three, I'm the most open here to this. And, and I said, but you've really got to. And they haven't come back yet. Before you come back before us, again. We need you to enlist Newcastle and Silt and Rifle and Parachute. Because of what we say is the housing has to be in the communities and we want those people. Those communities and those boards saying, yep, we're going to be part of this. Then, then we can, we're, we're open, I'm open minded, okay? But we've got to have those other communities and we're stressing and trying to work with them and so on. That's kind of where that's at right now.
That's good to know. Thank you for that context.
It was a little bit of a leap for us too. I mean, you know, we're all about um, doing the attainable housing and so forth and work, workforce housing. Um, but I think, you know, by and large, we see it as a resource to see what kind of strategies might work that would benefit us, that kind of thing. Which we don't have, um, you know, a housing uh, authority here. Uh, and they've come across with some good and very interesting ideas. I don't know if we would be able to subscribe to them or if they would fit with us. But at least it's a, it's a touch point where we can have some conversations and hear what others are doing, which is. Um, a benefit to our community as we're trying to make the right decisions for our um. Residents. So, yeah.
You have thoughts on housing from either the commission or the board of trustees?
Good value, Tom, just because of their, their uh, you know, uh, mission to really build green housing. So. That's um, exciting. Hopefully that project happens out in Rifle.
I don't know if we mentioned this last year, but you know, we have these trailer parks that are ostensibly in town, but they're in the county and. Trying to keep an eye on keeping those affordable and not uh. Turning over into some exploitative, you know, hedge fund or something.
Yeah, and that, and that's, we've seen that happen. I mean, we're dealing with water issues at Apple Tree.
Yeah.
You know, and that's in unincorporated Garfield County.
Yeah.
And I don't know, you know, I mean, all of our. All of our um, trailer parks, I mean, they're, they're not new. You know, they're, they're, they're fifty, thirty, fifty years old. And, and at some point, there is, there's going to be a crisis. I mean.
It's a lifestyle and a choice. You can't put everybody in a square box and make them happy. Some people like. That's why they live there. Others, they have to live them because it's the only thing they can give.
Yeah.
Well, I think there have been some good uh, examples recently in building on a state law, I believe, where it allows, you know, an organization to come in and buy the. Trailer park, the land itself, and then sell it back to the owners if they can get organized. And there's that one going on, on, is it Three Mile?
Especially on a such valuation.
Yeah.
And, and the market on that open land and then have those people that are just eking by because they're living there. Try and buy something they can't qualify for the land that was sitting down under their trailer. So yeah, it's, it's. It's a catch twenty-two for them.
It's a tough, it's a tough nut to crack, but I think it's worth a try. And I think that there's been some success in other parts of the state. So I'm just eager to see how it plays out. Because it is some of the last kind of free market affordable housing. That's not government subsidized. So to try to keep it in the owner's hands, we'll see how that plays out, Marty.
Looking into the future. The same problems that we have with affordable housing and Glenwood has with affordable housing and Basal has. It's already there in Newcastle. It's coming to Silt. It's coming to Rifle. It's coming past there. The battlement and to. Meeker. So this is the whole county's problem. It isn't just any one municipalities. So if we can get those towns to buy in as well. I hope we can get you commissioners to buy in as well. Because no one town is going to solve the problems of affordable housing going forward.
And, and you're, you're right. I use the, I use the example of Cardiff Glen, which was uh, built as affordable housing. And though those houses are all selling for four, eight hundred, eight hundred thousand plus.
Yeah, and where the rivers used to be. One point five to two point five million.
Yeah. So you're, you're correct. And, and going back to what Chris had to say, I mean, housing's economic uh, development. I mean, we, if we can't. We're not, we gotta, if we can't have housing for our employees, we're not going to have businesses. I mean, um.
And we're seeing that already.
Right.
With the problems of hiring people. You know, when the hospital like Valley View has to get nursing staff from Grand Junction. Or further west. When the uh, nurses at Vale are commuting from Rifle. You know, this should be a. Kind of a warning sign to us of what the future holds.
Oops, I keep us moving forward. Um, like I said, we could talk about housing all night, but I really appreciate that insight and kind of perspective on. Um, that as we see, if we see uh, municipalities uh, in Western Garfield County join the coalition and the co, then the county might have a. An open mind to it. I appreciate that. Um, next up is the rodeo. I, I see that there's a lot of interested folks here. Um, I just want to say first, we did not schedule this as a big public hearing to, to hear everybody's concerns about the rodeo. So this is a pretty brief. Check in between these two boards who have had our own public hearings about it. So I just want to manage expectations that. That that's, this is not really a public hearing. So um, if there's. Well, maybe make sure that your, your mic is where you can.
You're, you're going to lead the conversation on this though. All right.
Two mics.
You don't hear, they're on there. Let's do stereo here. The rodeo itself, we know the Wild West Rodeo. Is well, actually welcome according to the, the folks that live in, in the county surrounding the property. And they had some concerns, so they called me up. And they said they'd like to address parking. Which we tried to do and we met with the city and what have you and the, the Public Works Director and Recreation Director and what have you. I don't think enough signs got delivered, but we're working on that. It says no parking on this side of the roadway, which helped a little bit. And then the trash is a big issue. The trash after all the events. It doesn't just stay at the rodeo grounds. It goes up and down each one of those roads from Rose to Willow to whatever. And they have to pick it up. They don't like that because usually before the rodeo, it's all picked up and after the rodeo or whatever. People. Dispose of all the stuff they don't want to carry around in their car. So that's an issue. And uh, so the rodeo committee has been really good. Uh, I have to say thank you very much for that and the volunteers that have done that. I've also had the community corrections folks come out to the neighborhoods and pick up. We're hoping that that starts uh, should we say, a cultural change in picking up all your trash. It's announced in the rodeo several times to pick up your trash, recycle your trash, don't leave the. Where to park, where not to park, et cetera. So they're doing theirs. Noise is one of the issues. Um, and that usually goes back to the concerts or the uh, the Mexican rodeos that were a little bit too loud. I see that the two of them are going to move the Mexican rodeos to Rifle. They have one more that we have a, a liquor license and they've been schooled on noise, trash, parking. Uh, enforcement of liquor, et cetera. So hopefully that will work out. Uh, the neighbors are watching. They have been very willing to sit down with the rodeo committee and I think that we had good relations there. One or two little bumps, but I think we worked it out. Sheriff has been involved. Um, let's see, I think the first rodeo, we had the presence of the. Uh, Carbondale Police Department. We had the private security and the sheriff's office there seemed to go really well. And the rain didn't help, but we didn't have a real swelling of a crowd, but, but the rain helped a little bit, kept the dust down, kept the trash down. So we want it to be successful, but we need your cooperation too in reference to reviewing the permits and what have you. And how you go about doing your permits, what is allowed, what isn't allowed. Notification of a big event or not to the citizens outside the city, because they usually don't. Read the paper and follow what's happening at City Hall. So we need to work on communications uh. To the, that neighborhood. And we'd like to work on that, see if we can't work with both the county and the city to get that information out. And uh, be upfront with them and tell them what's going to happen. And they're pretty much straightforward with me and let me know what they like and what they don't like. And I will have a meeting with these folks again uh, Friday evening. Um, last Friday, we, we invited, invited the city manager, the chief of police and the public works director. But everybody had a conflict and it didn't quite work out. So we're hoping there'll be a representative next Friday, this coming Friday, I'm sorry, after the rodeo and see what. The results are. And say, here's some of our concerns. Here's what worked and here it didn't work. So hopefully we can have that conversation and we'll have a very successful rodeo and events. And hopefully you can put more money into the rodeo. Grounds and the facility. And uh, that's what they're looking for. Because it can be very successful, as we saw down in Rifle with our fairgrounds. I don't know, eight or nine million, ten million dollars we put in down there. So.
Yeah.
Big success story.
Did I miss anything? What did I miss? A lot?
Well, it's not about the rodeo. We're, we're totally in favor of the rodeo.
I know. But that's what's on the agenda.
Well, we want to.
Talk about what? What I missed?
Well, I can show you how loud it was. I've got.
I mentioned sound. I mentioned sound.
So how are we going to address the sound?
That's going to be a discussion with the city in reference to their permit and what they're allowed and what they're not allowed at their events. And that's going to be controlled by the city. I don't, I can't do much about the noise itself.
They don't have any noise.
Well, that's, that's a challenge that the citizens in the city are going to have to work out. That's kind of where it lies.
And that could be covered at all.
So what? Okay.
If I could just say, I would like the town in Carbondale to reconsider the roadmap. Um, uh, future events because of, of the space we have.
Okay.
And the neighborhood we have. And we have also, we've loved the rodeo. We've done a great job. There were some problems. It got really big. Uh, John, you are correct. Uh, you've been handling it great. But if we could reconsider the roadmaps as a future. To future events, we would so appreciate it. Many of us have lived there seventy, eighty, fifty years. And we like to work with y'all. And smaller events that are more conducive to that smaller space would be just. So if we're invited in the future, when we plan these things. I'm actually a.
We're, we're gonna.
Uh, yeah, that's a notification issue and the communications. And then uh, we'll talk about the other items on Friday evening, six o'clock. On the east end of the rodeo grounds. And if, have a representative, that'd be great. If not, I'll relay all of the information back to.
Okay.
And uh.
Yeah, you could talk to any of us later. You could talk to me later as mayor. I would just say, I think we, we got off to a really good start uh, pre-rodeo season with a, a new agreement and, and all the planning that went into that. And we just want to make sure that that's upheld, that the agreement.
All right, I'm going to give you a pat on the back. Pat on the back in reference to the planning on having, where the buses.
Yeah.
That helped tremendously in reference to crowds, in reference to parking and the other items.
Yeah.
Um, I know that you use two buses. There's a third maybe on standby.
Well, we're not doing it. It's actually Mike's.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if you could help them on that third bus or whatever, it'd be really great. Because uh, again. You want a successful rodeo as well. You, you never know, their fees may go up.
Yeah, I mean, I just think this is one of those interesting areas where we have to work together, right, to make it work. And we all want to make it work. Because the town owns the facility and, and manages the events and then it's in the county. And so we, we need, we need your help and cooperation there and, and you need ours. So I think we'll just continue those discussions. But it's good to hear that the signs are going in. Is that right?
Well, there, there weren't enough the first couple of times. I'm gonna, I've got to do inventory on Thursday night when I go down just to make sure that the road and bridge have dropped them off. Bentley was in charge of that. And I think that we had a report that the signs got dropped off again. Yeah. So we'll do inventory to see if there are enough, because I got some concerns that there weren't enough in reference to parking on uh, Rose, Willow. And Daisy.
Daisy.
Daisy was the other one. So we need some more. So we'll work on that. And how many did you actually count this last Thursday?
I counted one at the corner of uh, Rose and Daisy that said no parking, west side of Daisy.
Right, but it's only one?
East side of Daisy.
Mike, did you, did you do any count?
There's, there's one at the start of Willow Lane. There's one at the east side of Daisy. There's one at the west side of Daisy. And there's one at the start of Rose Lane.
Okay. Twenty-four.
There needs to be some in between.
Yeah. So.
For the shuttle buses, I mean, it's fifteen miles an hour, you know, coming in off the rows. I see some signs. They're coming the other way, coming in a relative way. They're coming.
Okay.
I had to answer to slow down.
And, and they're well aware of that now.
That'll be one of those discussions we have with Mike uh, on Friday. So be there.
I lost control of my meaning.
It would be, but.
When, when there is cars parked in the neighborhood, they don't take people.
Was there one more item?
Those, those are some of the question, those are some of the questions we need to do at the community meeting, not here. This is something totally different. This is just an update.
John.
Larry? Yeah.
Sorry, I just wanted to um. Uh, weigh in a little bit on um, some of the things that you had talked about with regard to neighbor concerns. I know that I was, with regard to the Mexican rodeo specifically. I was out at the rodeo grounds with um, Eric Brenninger, the security guys, the promoters for the Mexican rodeo. And the neighbors, as many of them as could get there. We had two meetings a couple of weeks back. On a, I don't know what morning it was, maybe a Friday morning. And one of the things that we discussed was the fact that. Even though there is a very distinct process. For our special event planning that starts in the late fall and early winter, gets approved in January. That because some of the neighbors are not in town, they're not listening to the meetings necessarily. That they weren't aware that the process had begun and that they were absolutely invited and what have you. And I did speak to the recreation director about how to resolve that. So that we make sure that when we have a location that is outside of town limits. We make a special um, effort. we make a special, um, effort to go out and notify them that we have this process going on so that they can be invited to be part of it before it's, you know, checked off for the year.
As a backup, could you also notify the administration for the county?
Absolutely.
Back you up on the notification. That'd work out.
Yeah.
But thanks, save all those questions. All right. What did you have?
I hate to interrupt, but I made a special trip up there today and I brought a visual aid here. This is an hour with my dog on the leash picking up trash at the rodeo ground this morning. So the other problem that needs immediate attention, there was a bear out there this morning at five o'clock in the morning. The two dumpsters out there are not empty. Most of the trash cans appear to be empty. Some of the lids aren't on there. I really think somebody needs to address this thing with the bear, because if he gets in with my cows, we got another cow that's going to calf, I'm going to kill the darn thing. Because I'm going to protect my livestock. So if you guys want to protect the bear, I think you should get somebody to see that those dumpsters stay empty. Uh, there's another issue with the dumpsters, but that's not right now.
Okay.
But I, I think this is an immediate problem that needs to be handled right away.
The bear issue and the garbage issue is, was that one of the ones we did not relay. Uh, I stand guilty on that one. Uh, but, uh, we need, we need to take care of the bear. Yeah. So.
Sounds like a manageable problem. Um, I, I would just say, you know, whenever we change our approach to something, the first year is often a little bit bumpy and we learn from it. And that's exactly what we're going through right now. Right? So we've got a long planning process that was really collaborative. I really appreciate Mike Kendy and the, um, group that runs Carbondale Wild West Rodeo for being so open and, and collaborative on all that and the county and the town and parking wreck and everybody working together. We put a plan in place. We've had two rodeos. We're getting some feedback and we'll continue to adjust. So I think that those community meetings, that, I'm sorry, we're, it's, we're gonna.
No, let's take it really clear. One thing really clear. Everybody in our neighborhood has one thing to say. And the one thing we have to say is the planning process, we don't want events every weekend all summer long. And we were not included in the planning process and nobody's happy about it. I can tell you that. And I want you to hear that.
Not the rodeo. It's not the rodeo.
Okay. So it sounds like our, we'll, we'll do more engagement, um, in those future processes to make sure that people that are outside of town know about that process and probably you'll, you'll all be well aware of it for next year because you're, you're well aware of it right now. Um, any other thoughts on the rodeo from this board or the commission?
I'll just be in touch.
Okay. Thanks, John. Um, last one, you all added to this one. So, uh, why don't you tee it up? Temporary mill levy reduction.
Well, that's a brand across my forehead here.
Okay.
Anti-tax anyway, but what amounts to is the assessed evaluations, overall state evaluations that you see anywhere from 48 to 60% increase of the assessed evaluation of all properties. What amounts to is if the mill levies stay the same, the tax revenue will actually go up 48 to 60%, depends on which, uh, taxing entity has the mill levy to do that. Uh, what we're looking at, we have not decided because we don't have our final numbers on total assessed evaluation. We're looking at, following the state statutes that have been on the books for many years. Uh, and by the way, I want to compliment the, the, uh, Carbondale Fire District because they have been doing this. And that is to adjust their mill levy down so that their revenue stays the same or just enough to meet their expenditures plus inflation. Every, uh, taxing entity has that authority to do that. It was even codified again this year in reference to state legislation, saying you could do a temporary reduction and for one year, and you can look at increasing it or even decreasing it again the following year based upon assessed evaluation and overall, uh, demand for revenue. I am urging everybody to really look hard at what their assessed evaluations are, what it's going to bring in if there is no mill levy adjustment with the two, 2022 uh, evaluations, not 23 yet. But, uh, look at that hard and say, hey, who has come to our aid every time that we have needed to raise the tax float a bond or whatever? And it's been the citizens. This is the time that we need to turn to the citizens and say, hey, we're here for you as well. We're going to do everything we can to keep a cap on it and not collect all the tax that we're, could tax based upon our mill levies and our assessed evaluation. We're going to make it easy on you somewhat. It depends upon how much mill you have and what your projection is going to be in your district. I really want to look hard at that. Uh, I know that CMC was one of the first ones to come out and say they're going to look at it. And they stole my thunder, but, uh, the next day I asked Glenn Wood, uh, should we say the Garfield County Commissioners to consider the same. And we are, we're going to look at it. But we want you to look at it because you're getting a little three to four mills. You're bringing in six to $700,000 right now on mill levies. Uh, what are you going to do in 2023 with your assessed evaluation and how much do you really need based upon that? Fire District needs to look at that too. They got 12 mills within the assessed evaluation area. They need to adjust that as well. CMC, they're in your district and all the other folks that are here, school districts. I really think that the big key is working with the school districts, understanding that they get anywhere from 39 to 60% of the mills that come in or, or revenue, that they need to look at this and say, what do we really need? Because we have floated bonds, we have asked for mill levy overrides, we have done everything and the citizens have spoke up and supported us. Let's see if we can't get them to support the citizens this time, because this is a hardship, truly a hardship. Uh, and, uh, we got the, uh, proposition HH on the ballot in November. And that affects everything in reference to your, your taxation as well as your timing in reference to budgets. Because, uh, it really takes your Tabor refunds away from you, uses it for other purposes and then gives you maybe a credit at the end. So they take it away and you might get some credit later on. But it is a backfill for the school districts and that's really what it's for. Cause they don't, again, they're under Tabor and that's a restriction in reference to revenue. But if the HH goes for, they bypass Tabor and this goes to the backfill of the schools. It's worth looking at. I'm not for HH. Uh, and I'm also for the mill levy reduction. So if you're interested in how much everybody gets, uh, I have it right here and I'll leave it with you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Any thoughts on that or questions? I thought our number was a lot lower. I thought we were three or 400,000. Commissioner Martin said 700,000 or something like that, that we get from our property tax. That's it. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. I can give it to you.
Okay.
This is straight from the assessor at the treasurer on exactly the dollar to the penny that they have sent to each tax, taxing district. So that they know.
Yeah, I think ours is. Yeah, yeah, that'd be great to look at. I think ours is one of the smallest ones in there because the town, you know.
You're not one of the smaller.
Well, with as far as the like percent of our revenue for our operations at least.
For your budget.
It's a minuscule amount, um, because we really depend on sales tax.
Yeah, others say you have other revenue that you look at and it's on the increase. Sales tax is on the increase.
Yeah.
So that's why I say, look at this to see what you really need on your mills.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else for the good of the group here? We're a few minutes over our 6:30 stop, but that's okay. We got a pretty light agenda after this, one big item and then a, an update. So. Anything else from the board of trustees or the county commission?
All right. I'd just say thank you for having us. When I became a commissioner, I said, we didn't do this. We need to reach out. We need to talk. We need to talk with the towns and cities and we need to meet with these boards and see what's on their minds and so on and so forth. And I think this has been the most productive meeting that I had with the town of, uh, Carbondale since I've been a commissioner. And thank you very much. We appreciate it. And if, I'll just, all three of us feel this way. If, if you want to talk with us and you want to have us twice a year or something, give us a call. We'll be here.
All right.
We'll come to your house.
We'll take you up on that.
Once a month. We do meet with them twice a year.
Well, we're all.
It's nice that you're offering fantastic status quo.
We don't, we don't meet like this twice a year.
Yeah. No, I, I really appreciate it too. And I think these relationships are really important. Um, you know, I know that on some level, you all might feel like you represent the people outside the municipalities because they don't have a, a local government other than you, but you represent us too, right? We're all taxpayers and voters.
Part of the county.
In Garfield County. And so I think it's really crucial that when we're thinking about things for our residents and Carbondale, the almost 7,000 people who live here, um, they're all in the county as well. So. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you for dinner.
We'll take a five minute break, yeah, to transition and, um, then we'll get started and we're talking about short terminals. All right. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Uh, next item on our agenda is short term rental discussion with stakeholders. Uh, town manager Lauren Gister will kick that off. And then we do want to hear from the public on this one. Our last one was just an update and so we, it was not a public hearing. Uh, but the whole purpose of this discussion is to hear from folks on, uh, what's working and what's not. So Lauren, why don't you give us a little bit of context before we dive in, please?
Thank you, Ben. Um, the, thank you. The, um, short term rental regulations, uh, were, um, voted into effect last March, um, by this board. As a temporary measure to try to collect some data about what we had really in the town of Carbondale with regard to short term rentals. There were all kinds of anecdotal stories out there regarding, you know, investors coming in and buying up blocks of properties and, and short term renting them. Um, and how many we potentially had, whether there were 50 or 100 or 250. And we really did not have any data. So, um, the background is, and I think most of the people who are either online or in this room are aware of this. What the board did was, um, pass an ordinance regulating short term rentals on a temporary basis. Grandfathering in those, uh, properties that were already being used as short term rentals and leaving a window, a very small window open for new properties to come in during this temporary, um, period of time. Um, wasn't wide open, but it did allow short term rental licenses to be issued as of right, um, either in primary residences or, um, in the HCC zone district. Um, so what we're doing now is trying to collect the data and analyzing the data about how many units we have and how our regulations are affecting people, good and bad, what's working, what's not working. Um, we, uh, I think the board is going to be very interested in, um, how the restriction on the rent, on the regulations currently to HCC and primary residence has been affecting people. Um, and just so that everyone is aware, uh, if you don't know this, and I know our board does, we have 71 licensed, um, short term rentals in Carbondale right now. Um, Thirty, let's see, where is this? Thank you, Jessica, for this data. Thirty-one of them are entire houses. Um, and then there are either rooms in primary residences, multifamily condominiums, um, townhomes, et cetera, and ADUs to equal the uh, the total of seventy-one. So thirty-six in primary residences and thirty-five as um, second homes or investment properties of some sort. They are spread all over town. There are not very many clusters of properties. Um, I do have, and there may be some still on the table, uh, map that our planning director put together today, where he just located the licensed units. Um, and they're literally spread all over town. There's uh, eight uh, eight or nine of them in RVR. There are, of course, um, quite a few in the downtown districts, especially in the HCC. And then they're scattered throughout, throughout town. We have not had to turn down uh, many license applications. Although we have had some people who have inquired and were told that under our current regulations, they did not qualify for a license, so they just didn't go through and apply. We've also had several complaints, particularly recently, um, by neighbors and other residents about unlicensed short term rental units in town. We have not yet begun to enforce our regulation, which has some pretty stringent penalties in it for not have, for operating a short term rental within town limits um, without a license. Because we are pretty much in the process right now of having the discussion about what needs to change, if anything, and putting a permanent regulation in place. Did I get everything?
I think that's great.
Okay.
Questions for Lauren from the board? Um, I just had a couple other thoughts and then we really want to hear from everybody. Um, just on the purpose of our uh, regulation, I've got it in our packet. I won't read all the clauses, but it's got these whereas clauses that really state the purpose of the ordinance, just so we're clear. Um, and I'll read a, a few quotes. It says, "In response to growth pressures and concerns related to the scarcity of affordable and workforce housing, the town has determined there's a need to protect the limited supply of workforce housing by regulating the conversion of long-term residential rental units to short term rentals and the purchase of homes for the purpose of short term rentals." That really captures the main goal of this regulation. Uh, at the same time, we acknowledge from the start that there are a lot of benefits of short term rentals. Um, I remember Eric Mitchell, owner of Fat Thai, really talking about he needs short term rentals for his clients, his guests and his, his diners at the restaurant, and he needs long term rentals for his staff. So we need both. Um, and so we have a couple of things that hint, that uh, hit at that. It's also says in the ordinance, uh, short term rentals contribute to the local economy and support tourist oriented businesses. They also allow homeowners to supplement their income and provide flexibility in renting second homes and portions of their primary residence. But we've determined that uncontrolled and regula, unregulated short term rentals may also have a, an effect on the quality and character of the community. So that's, that's kind of the gist of it, is that our goal really is to strike a balance where people can come here and have a place to stay, other than our very limited hotel capacity, um, and contribute to our local tourism oriented, oriented economy and businesses. And we don't um, put too much strain on our long-term rental housing stock, which we all know is severely limited, um, and only seems to be getting worse um, going forward. Uh, I think that those statistics are really important, that we have uh, seventy-one licensed today. That's about two point four percent of our total housing stock. So we, and comparing that to other municipalities, CAST, the Colorado Association of Sketowns. If you ever, ever want to get some good data on this, look them up. It's public on their website and the spreadsheet that I'll cite is, is on their website, available to the public right now. Um, the only municipalities that are members of CAST that reported their data that are lower than us are Durango at one point five percent of their total housing scott, stock. And Glenwoods at almost exactly the same spot. There says two point three, ours says two point four, so that's essentially the same. And then uh, just a couple other examples around us, Salida, um, three point five percent. And then it really jumps up, Avon, Silverthorne, and the eight, nine percentage. Um, Frazier, Uray, twelve, thirteen percent, Frisco, twenty percent. This is percentages of their housing units, residential units that are currently short term rentals. And then you, you really go up, you know, Steamboats, thirty percent. And then you get up, I think, Breckenridge, Breckenridge is fifty-six percent. So you know, you look at statistics like that and um, I've met with the, the mayor of Breckenridge and these people say, "You officially don't have a problem at two point four percent." But we're, we're a different kind of community and we have no desire to, to, to be that kind of um, you know, really kind of overnight visitor oriented population. And so it's in some people's minds, I know seventy-one might seem like too much. So I think what we're here to do tonight is really hear from um, those of you who are, who have these rentals and as well as people who live nearby or, or, or concerned about them. Um, we'd love to hear what's going well about our current regulations and anything that's not going well or that you feel like needs to change. And I'll just acknowledge, as um, Lauren, our town manager said, um, the implementation of the policy, the collection of taxes, the licensing, that's been a little bit of a bumpy road. It's, and some of those are beyond our control and, and um, some of it's just kind of staffing and, and getting things up to speed over the past year. Um, so I want to acknowledge that and you know, if you have comments about that, you can share them. But I think what we'll really be focused on tonight is, we're gonna assume that that all smooths out going forward. Um, we're gonna have all that implemented. We're gonna have a pretty easy online portal and tax collection and all that here soon. Um, and the voters did support our, what is it, six percent um, tax on short term rentals. That's our first dedicated source of affordable housing funding in Carbondale history, so we're proud of that. It's not gonna bring in a ton of money, a hundred thousand or so, but um, that's something. Um, so let's assume that the, the glitches in implementation are gonna get worked out. Um, but if you have those concerns, share them. But really, um, I'm curious, we're curious, um, should we open it up more to single family or to non-primary residences outside of the historic commercial core? Cause right now you, you can only um, have a, a place that you don't live in more than half the time. Um, as a short term rental, you can only have that if it's in the historic commercial core, which is right around here. Are there second homes sitting empty that could be better utilized if we open that up a little bit? Um, I think is one of the questions, uh, Erica Sparhawk, one of our fellow trustees who couldn't be here tonight, was wondering about. Should we be more restrictive? We've tried to keep this really simple. We've tried not to get into geographic density and drawing radiuses, you know. Staff can only take on so much at a time. And so we've tried to keep it really simple and I think we've succeeded in that so far. So um, any comments from the board before we open it up, Marty?
Yeah, uh, this is still a work in progress. So this is kind of like, where are we at now? Okay. Since there is no enforcement, we don't know if there are people out there who have not submitted applications.
There are.
I'm, I'm sure there are. Okay, but like I said, this is a work in progress and this is gonna take time. This is not gonna be the final discussion on this, I am sure. Okay, but this was the first step. And when you cited our number of two point three percent, part of it was that we didn't want it to get to seven, eight or ten percent. So I say two, three, two point three percent, even doubling that if that many people are out there who don't have licenses. As being that we've accomplished part of what we want to. Okay, and the six percent tax, maybe it's only a hundred thousand now. Maybe it's more down the road. Maybe in seven years it's doubled. Instead of a hundred thousand, it's two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand. But it is the first dedicated tax towards affordable housing, which was another component of this. I'm sure there are a lot of questions. I've heard a lot of comments from people, uh, especially with the assessment and tax increases and increases in, in insurance, uh, seniors on fixed income, who are speaking about renting out a room. Okay, uh, I've heard of people who go away. But they're not renting their house for a week or two, they're renting it for three or four months. And I don't see an issue with that.
Yeah, month, if it's over, if it's thirty days.
If it's over thirty days, you know, that's fine, that's all right. Anyway, I'll leave it at that, I'm sure the audience has enough comments they want to make. But I just want to say, this is really a work in progress. This is not the final word on the subject.
Okay, and if you're online and you'd like to speak, just uh, click the little Zoom hand raise. And I think what we'll do is one person who's here in person and then one person who's online and just kind of bounce back and forth. You can address your comments to me. We don't have to be super formal, but about three minutes. Um, and um, we might not answer all of your questions right on the spot, but we'll, we'll take them into consideration and come back to it. So, but that said, would anyone like to share some thoughts with us? So you can just approach the podium one at a time. If not, yeah, go ahead. And if you're just here to listen, that's cool too. And just tell us your name for the record, please, so our town clerk can record.
Nina Peterson, I don't have anything prepared, but I've been in touch with Christie a lot. I've spoken to Lauren. My hope is that, well, first of all, I'm a quarterly taxpayer. It's hard for me to know what, whether this next uh, STR is part of the quarterly or part of a monthly. I'd really like it to be streamlined as one, due at the same time by the twentieth of that quarter. And other than that, I've never gotten a complaint. It's been smooth sailing, nothing but happy people. The only complaint I had, which Lauren knows and I think Christie knows, is VRBO is a bear.
Right.
I, I, I've actually shut myself out of VRBO for my in-town property because I just won't ask a guest for money after they've made every effort and whatever they had to do to get there. They do not owe me any more money, so I will not do that. Airbnb, they were slick, phew, done. And I have it in my own when I book direct. But for me, I book them a whole year out. So everything I'm dealing with was done last year. So um, there is money out of my pocket coming out. So, you know, I just want that to be known. That is my ethical standard, I will not collect outside. So I don't think I have anything else unless anybody has a question.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Uh, somebody online, is anybody gonna raise your Zoom hand? If not, that's okay, but I don't see any hands up online. Oh, there we go. John? Hi, John, you'll probably need to unmute yourself, there you go.
Hey, Ben, how's it going? Hi, everybody, thank you. I just wanted to chime in and say thank you to everybody who worked on this and got it set up at the town because I know starting a new process at a town is not easy. And um, I feel like the communication has been really good and it's been a really measured and steady approach and I just thank everybody involved.
All right, thanks, John. Maybe this is gonna be easier than we thought. Zane, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Zane Kessler, seven thirty-four Garfield Avenue. Um, I just want to thank staff. Um, we, my wife and I have a license but have not used it. We're using our rental property in town for a long-term rental for some friends of ours that needed a place. I will say, for us, part of the calculation of raising a family in this valley is the ability to use uh, our property for, or our license to, to generate revenue if one of us decides to stop working and stay home with the kids. Um, or, you know, just, there's a variety of factors um, that come into, you know, our planning and our ability to stay in this town long-term. That being said, I, I want, the one thing I wanted to say was thank you to staff. Um, it seems as though the data, which is what we asked for a year ago, um, has been incredibly helpful understanding the, the scope of the situation. Um, it's pretty hard to manage something unless you can measure it. And so really appreciate the work that staff has gone to and the lengths that they've gone to, to work with um, license holders and others um, in that process, so thank you. Um, and then I would just ask you to think about, as you consider next steps. It seems as though what we've got right now works pretty well. Um, but if you're thinking of making changes, please consider um, the needs of those family members that are committed to being in this community long-term and the ability for some of us to use our home to, to make money, um, to make ends meet or just make the cost of living a little bit easier to deal with. So um, thank you all for your thoughtful approach on this, we really appreciate it. I know there was um, a lot of hyperbole on both sides at one point in this conversation and it seems as though having the facts and the data in front of us, we can all um, work together to, to figure out what's next. So, thank you all.
Thanks, Zane. All right, looks like Kevin Ray's online, well, and then you'll have to unmute.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yep, we got you, thanks, Kevin.
Awesome, I'm sorry I can't be there tonight, I'm actually uh, at work uh, doing another public hearing, but thought I'd chime in here. Uh, I'd just like to echo some of the comments that were just mentioned. Um, I think the regulations that are in place right now are a great starting point um, for trustees to kind of mull over. Um, I would certainly encourage trustees to uh, continue thinking about how this topic uh, relates to the conversation from about thirty minutes ago, uh, the affordable housing topic. Uh, they're very much related. Um, and you know, with that in mind, uh, you know, I would say don't uh, let your foot off the gas. And, and certainly don't pull back any of the regulations you have now. This is something that we were able to get done early enough that there wasn't significant pushback, but there certainly was some. And uh, pulling back regulations sort of opens the floodgates, so to speak, to allow uh, more pushback to water down these, these regulations. Uh, just two really specific points I want to make here. Um, the STR tax that's in place right now of six percent is a great uh, tax for people that use uh, short term rentals, if they have an extra bedroom in their house or if they want to rent out their basement, but i- if they're using it as their primary home, I think that's a great tax. For the people who are using short term rentals on a second home or an investment property, uh, I've mentioned this a few months back, but I'm gonna say it again, we are subsidizing those uses right now. The comprehensive plan that's memorialized uh, for the town of Carbondale talks about adding more lodging in the historic commercial core. But the, the nuance of that is lodging pays commercial property taxes, which are twenty-nine percent of assessed value. Residential property taxes are six percent. So these, these uh, businesses that are, you know, assessed residential property tax rates are paying way lower than a typical lodge. So if I was a business owner, I would certainly be upset about that because I'm, I'm paying twenty-nine percent and, and these other buildings are being run as businesses and they're not doing the same. On that same note, uh, I would encourage uh, trustees to think about reaching uh, or uh, uh, direct staff to reach out to the um, to the uh, county assessor uh, and just say, hey, uh, for any potential appeals that you're receiving on property tax assessments, please do not uh, allow appeals to go through for properties that have a short term rental license. We do not want to reduce the property taxes for properties that have a short term rental license uh, just because of the fact that we're currently subsidizing them. So that, that would be my only other comment. And again, uh, appreciate trustees uh, taking on this topic. But again, this is very much related to affordable housing and I, I ask that you continue to keep your foot on the gas. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Um, Mark, do you want to come? I know that we talked a little bit about Kevin's point there, his first point, that um, if you're in a residential area, you're paying residential property tax, but you're running essentially a business if it's not your primary residence. Um, if we decided that that's the direction that we wanted to go, I thought your advice last time was that there's, there's not really a path.
We, the.
And just make sure you're on, it might be, but make sure.
You have state property.
Just make sure it's on, yeah.
Uh, my understanding of state property tax laws is that they are um, driven by use classifications at the state level. Agriculture, residential, commercial, um, and that they, even zoning property doesn't redetermine that. Like if we switch a zoning from one thing to another, the county, the assessor will certainly look at that, but I don't even know that that's determinative. So, long story short, Ben, I think you're remembering that I said that we don't, it's not really our call to make and the fact that these properties are, you know, viewed as residential um, is uh, you, you know, the whole, there's some case law in Colorado even where, where um, somebody asserted and tell your eye, they tried to go after somebody for a zoning violation because of short term rentals and lost big. And the court basically said that whether it's rented for a, a night or a year, it's still residential. And so that's a different issue than the tax, but i- it, there's no obvious, easy answer if I'm responding to you.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I mean, the, the Aspen answer is to tax those, they have a different assessment rate for it. What is it, ten percent for the second home? I don't know, they have a one rate for primary residence and a different rate for uh, second. I think we even threw that in the air for a second, but, you know, we'll try to get it passed, something passed.
Okay. Well, and it's interesting that it doesn't seem to have kept property values at a reasonable level, or if that was the intent up there. I don't know that that's had any impact, but maybe it has. Maybe they'd be even worse.
I think they, well, I I don't, I think it was just trying to harvest money for amelioration of the impacts of those issues.
Okay. All right.
Thank you all. My name's Arn Menconey. I live on Went Boulevard. I've been living in the town of Carbondale since twenty fifteen, and I'm a renter. And I want to thank you first and foremost for making an allowance for me to be able to have a short-term rental. It's made a great difference. Rents have gone up considerably in just the last year since this went into place, so has interest rates. I want to kind of paint a picture. I'm living here as a single parent. I have a two-bedroom apartment across from Sopers Park. This rental allows me to, or this short-term policy allows me to have a part-time roommate in my children's bedroom. So I couldn't afford to live here if I could not have this provision allowed for renters. The restriction is only one bedroom. The other is that it has to be the owner approval. On top of that, our association has spent numerous meetings trying to create further restrictions than this one in order to prevent short-term rentals. I signed the petition when it was going around initially. I was in favor. I worked with some of the Public Action Committee that was working on this, so I'm in favor of this. I want to make sure that renters are represented in this. I would think most people in this room probably own their own home. I've owned a home before. I was a county commissioner. I ran a homeowners association business, which is the worst job in America. And so I understand a lot about the policies that and the confusion, but we don't want to see the pendulum swing back in the other direction. We're out of the seven thousand residents that are living here. Let's say a third may rent. And then what we have to do is get our owner's approval. And then what I think worked out very nicely in this trial period is that my owner was essentially on the hook. And I was working as a representative. So to giving, I brought my daughter here and my son's working to understand that this is a family affair. This is one of the best communities in the country, I believe. And just to continue fostering this type of community that we have, where people like myself, who want to be able to live close to their children while they're still in high school, can be here for all the things that we appreciate as parents. We talked a lot about the affordability issue with the commissioners here and that. This is a way to make it affordable for renters. I bring in with my rent being around twenty-two hundred dollars a month, I may bring in around six thousand dollars a year. Not that many guests. Most of my guests are professionals. They're here either to work or to ski or to recreate. I make sure that if they're going to be living in the room next door to me, that they're cool and that they've had recommendations through their B and B process. My my owner would not allow me to do this if he didn't think that I was a good a good tenant for him. And I just think it's, I hope that this board can find a way to go back to the original discussion that was told to me when I signed the petition. Would this exclude renters? They said no, because it was for owner occupants or primary residents. It got changed or didn't get discussed according to those folks. I talked to the previous mayor about this. He had said that they had not had discussions about tenants. But I think we're people too. I know you can do this. And if you have any questions for me, I'd love to come back. And I'd also say thank you for sending out an email to all of us about this meeting time, so we could be here and give us, give you all our input.
Thanks, Arne. Lauren, do you want to give us any other context on that renter kind of issue and how we handled that? I know it was kind of a one-off, but.
Well, in our application, we have ultimately is the owner's liability. And the the reason that we made the exception for Arne is because it was pre-existing short-term rental before we started licensing. But we have not done, had a lot of discussion about how to arrange that if it's a tenant. What we said was, you know, if the owner wants to be the licensee and which is basically what what Arne is doing, the owner's the licensee and and Arne is the manager, then we let that go through, but we haven't done it for anyone else. So that could probably be a conversation that we would have. I think there are some legal liability issues with regard to that. And, you know, Arne doesn't do what sounds like he's he's not renting, you know, short-term rental to have two different people coming every week or what have you. This is a very part-time thing for him. But if he was renting a four-bedroom house and short-term renting three bedrooms as a tenant, that there might be some issues with that. And I think we should, before we really consider that, we should really delve into what kinds of legal issues and liability issues that there might be.
The the way the HOA is kind of handling that and is they're trying to restrict anything under six months. And they are trying to go into a time limit, but I would just say if I'm kind of a bellwether, I don't get, I couldn't rent it every time. It was my kids weren't with me. There's not the there's not the interest in it. It comes in the wintertime to a certain degree. It comes in the summer. I think I get like let's call it two visits for three weeks every month on average. My, I charge seventy-five dollars. I'm on the very low end. So unless it'd be painful to charge less than that and have the turnover and trying to deal with it. And I could rent out the room probably for fifteen hundred dollars. So it's, there could be maybe some ways to where it's restricted to one unit. And I would say the business is there's just clearly not enough business. It's either like my first tenant for summer will come in in July. My first tenant in winter will be around Christmas time and I'll finish in March.
Okay, thanks, Arne. Is there anybody else online with a hand up? Okay. Morgan. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Morgan.
You know, I think this is something we're going to have to discuss down the road. Because there are people who I know personally who are looking to buy houses and rent out two, three bedrooms as short-term rentals. And given the cost of rents, they're owners, but there are people who are looking to rent two bedrooms and short-term renting one of the bedrooms. So I mean, there's more discussion to be had on this subject. That's all I'm saying.
And are they just, is your anecdote people who live in the house and it's their primary residence? Or they're buying it like it is an investment property?
No, they're buying it as their primary residence, but the only way they can afford it is to rent out two or three of the bedrooms.
And that would be allowed under our current ordinance.
It would, but I'm also, there are also people who are looking at getting rentals, two-bedroom rentals and renting out one bedroom short-term.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of Lauren's case.
I mean, just looking at like what the new play, the new condos at the roundabout Hayden Place are going for forty-five hundred and five K for rentals for three bedrooms. I could see where people would look to do that. And of course, that's a much, I think, tougher issue to deal with a a commercial, you know, property owner than what Arne is dealing with, an individual owner. But, I mean, yeah, I, I mean, ridiculous, but.
And I think the question is, in allowing that, does that just drive those prices up even more?
I mean, I don't know that it drives the prices up. I think that's already at the really high end of where rentals are.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just something we're gonna have to talk about as we go along. Yeah.
Okay. Morgan.
Thanks for reaching out to homeowners and the STR people that took on to this meeting. It was super helpful for the communication. And I think the process as a STR owner, I think the process is like, was simple. It was easy. It was well explained. And so that that seems well. I'm happy paying taxes to support affordable housing. I totally support that. I rented in this valley for a long time. You know, I had a teacher's salary and, you know, bought a property and built a home and then tried to rent it out. I live in it. And so, you know, I think I have one weekend rented out for the summer so far. So I don't get a ton of income, but I would like to, when I travel, you know, rent it out for a month or two, you know. But anyways, I am just curious like why, like STR rentals become the scapegoat for affordable housing. I don't, you said there's one point, what's the percent?
About two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent of the houses are STR in this town. Like, it doesn't seem like that's the problem. It seems like it's other things. Like that, like we need affordable housing. We need tax dollars to support affordable housing from other ways. You know, I know corporations, Ski Co. is doing that. And but I don't think STR is the, like, us homeowners, what is it, seventy-one homeowners are the problem for affordable housing. But that's just something that's been on my mind. I feel like if you disin- incentivize like me making income from, you know, my home that I've built, like you're, like, are you incentivizing corporate hotels to come in and make more, you know, rentals for people? Like, you're disin- incentivizing the homeowner, the local. You know, I've only been a local since two thousand eight, but like, why are you disincentivizing, you know, me from making income versus, you know, comfort in, they can just, you know, put in, maybe get, maybe we just need some more hotels here and corporations to make, like, to put up people. Is that what we want? You know, or we want local people to make in some income? So just a, just a thought that like constantly comes up, like in all, in Sober Sun, like all the letters are just like STRs, STRs. And I hope everyone's happy now. I'm happy, like, pay taxes to support, do our part to pay for affordable housing. Like, I want to support that. It was hard for me as a renter for a long time. So I totally get that. There was a speaker who talked about us not being taxed, like, as a property tax. I get my property taxes to residence. Then we pay for the STR rental in addition to our residence. I have to pay income tax on the income from, so I don't know if that adds three more percent to make nine percent, but, you know, we're being taxed, you know, on on our STR. I think that is it. But I guess I would ask before I leave, what's the clear, is there a clear connection? Like, why STR is the the root of affordable housing issues? You know, in the last, since I've been here, this town has grown immensely. There's so much more housing. And I mean, I saw a letter in the Sober Sun about it. Nothing's affordable with the thousands more units available. And these aren't even STR units. They're just in general units. So, you know, it seems like it's coming from somewhere else. We got to solve this affordable housing issue.
Thanks, Morgan. Just say your name for the record so a clerk can grab it.
Morgan Williams.
Thanks.
Yeah.
But he's making the argument that the short-term rentals are the only thing. I think it's, but they're not also making the argument that they're not a little bit of the part problem. And so it's seems clear that it's a, you know, it's a whole, coming from every direction, so.
Yeah, I think we just wanted to get a handle on it before it got out of control. I mean, if you look at some of the cities I cited where they've got thirty, forty, fifty percent of their units, like, that would obviously squeeze our twenty-eight hundred or so available housing units down even further. So, you know, it's it's a lot of things, right? It's remote work. It's historically low interest rates. That part has changed. It's cash buyers from other more expensive places. There's just a whole lot of factors. And this is, as Chris said, this is one of them, and this is one that we could do something about. A lot of those are out of our control. Interestingly, town population, I mean, you can distrust the US Census, but it's generally pretty reliable. Carbondale's population from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty grew by nine people. So this impression that there's been so much, so much population growth, you know, unless it's all happened in the last three years.
Consumption growth, I think, is our issue.
Yeah. And I think what a lot of that is, is that like, a lot of units actually have fewer people in them than they used to, you know, people who can have more space and that sort of thing. So interesting demographics. Thanks, Morgan.
I do like that part about the STRs that it has to be a primary residence. I think I'm a big supporter of that.
Great, thank you. All right. Anybody else like to address us on this issue? I don't think so. Tell us your name, please.
Hi, I'm Camille Schuman. I live at four sixteen Settlement Lane in Carbondale in RVR. Been a resident of Garfield County for fifty years. And now Carbondale included in that fifty years, twelve-plus years, and love Carbondale. My daughter and son-in-law bought a house two doors down from me on Settlement Lane. This is going to be their dream home, their retirement home. They love it. They have improved the house, the property. They do short-term rent some, and of course, they come some. And we really appreciate the regulations that you've set forth. And we hope that, and they're grandfathered in, they immediately applied and did all the due diligence to legally short-term rent, and they focus on running to a family. It's a big house, four bedrooms, four baths, and beautiful yard, and they've done lots of improvements. And we hope that Carbondale and the trustees will continue this. It sounds like it's going to expire the end of the year. I don't know, maybe not. But please continue it so that they can do some short-term rental. They paid one point four million for this house two years ago. And they're working in Denver, but they're planning on coming back to Carbondale because they love it so much. My daughter grew up in Glenwood. So please continue through the town of Carbondale to allow them to continue doing this because they need some supplement in order to have this beautiful home in Carbondale. Do you have any questions of me?
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate all your hard work.
Anybody else? Any thoughts?
Mayor, may I ask one question?
Uh, yeah, let me just see. Does anybody else have anything to share? Sure, Arne. Uh, yeah, this is, Lauren, you had said there could be a legal issue, the complication or something?
I I don't know.
Okay. I just wondered what that might look like or what your thoughts or discussions may have been on that.
I don't recall the, that we were, if there were unpaid taxes, you know, presumably that's a lien against the home, not the, not the primary tenant of the home. So there needs to be a nexus to the landowner. That may be what you're.
So if if the owner is sort of making the application, the lien would be still involved.
The only property that exists is owned by the owner, right? I think that's maybe what we were talking about. So there's things to think about. But
I don't think we're ready to do a deep dive on that right now. We're just kind of raising, like, what are the issues that we want to discuss in more length? Thanks. Okay, well, then it's, it looks like everybody's spoken that that would like to. So board discussion, I think options going forward are, we can identify any issues that we want to work on more. We could say, leave it alone. I'd say the one that Erica's brought up a couple of times and that that I'm curious about is whether we want to allow any flexibility with the the homes that aren't your primary residence that are outside HCC that didn't exist before this went into effect. Because essentially, what's going to happen over time is those grandfathered-in ones, they're going to change hands. People are going to not reapply for the permit. They're going to lose it. And those will phase out. So that's, we just have to acknowledge that the course we're on is a course of, and if that's the course we want to be on, that's fine. It's going to only be primary residences except in historic commercial core in some number of years. I've entertained the idea, and I don't know what exactly what this would look like of the intent is still to prevent what could be a long-term rental from becoming a short-term rental. I wonder if there's a way to to do both, to say, you know, there's a conditional use permit. You have to meet some conditions. You have to make some sort of, you know, evidence. You have to bring some sort of evidence that meets some sort of criteria. Why you're just not, this unit is not suitable as a long-term rental. Maybe it's that you spend three months a year here. So you're not going to rent it out and you you Um, so you're not going to rent it out and you, you come, you know, one weekend every month or whatever it is, so it's not really suitable for a month-to-month, it's not really suitable for long-term, but it's sitting empty. Would that be good for our local businesses and, you know, good for the economy to, to allow that to be used? So I don't know what that would look like, we don't have to go into the weeds on that right now, but that's, that's like the only one I've been thinking is maybe worth considering, and I'd be open to other suggestions on any changes to what we're doing. One?
That's the example of that medical professional who wanted to buy a house here, but wasn't, her principal residence was in Denver.
Yeah, can you refresh our memory on kind of that scenario?
She came here, she wanted to get a short-term rental license, so that I believe she was going to be here one week a month or something, and she wanted to know that she could obtain a short-term rental license before she went through with the closing to buy the property, because what she said was, being here one weekend, one week a month, I can't afford this property unless it also brings me some kind of income. And I may end up being here more, and I may end up being here permanently, but right now, that's not the picture. And I can't call it my principal residence because I'm not here more than six months a year.
And she was very honest. I mean, she, she asked for an exception, and this board, um, did not feel that an exception was warranted. To me, this is, requires more discussion at a work session. I mean, this is not the time or place to really get.
But that, but that's the example of what would fit into that conditional use permit or what have you.
And I'd say, Marty, tonight is the time and place to be really clear about what we want, because the, the clock's ticking on, um, this regulation needing to be updated by the end of the year, right?
September, I would think, to be able to give people notice if there are changes to whatever they're going to be able to do with renewal.
I think it's important that we say at this point, if we're not considering anything more restrictive, that way people can go forward with certainty, they can book things and, right, we're not looking at something more restrictive, we're not looking at, um, undoing the grandfather clause of, of the single-family or the non-primary residents that existed before regulations. We're not talking about getting rid of the HCC allowance, so does anybody feel like we need to be more restrictive? I guess that's a question.
Maybe not more restrictive, but can, continuing to keep our initial philosophy in mind, right? And one of the things that, um, I took away from Dave Mylar's presentation was that he stated that seventy percent of the recent purchases are retirees or second homeowners, which I didn't realize it was that high. Um, but at, when we started the discussion about this, and I'm probably bordering on discrimination here based on the Fair Housing Act, but I'll just say it anyway, I mean, to differentiate between how to assist committed community contributors versus enabling non-established commercial outside interests to profit from our environment, I mean, that's kind of what's been in the back of my mind. And I'm sure that that's what's been driving the whole valley's perspective on, um, preserving as much, um, real estate as we can.
I can say that, um, one of the things that we found when we collected the data about the licenses and who owned these properties, I believe there's only one corporation that owns a property, and everyone else is a, is an individual, whether it's a second home or whether it's, you know, somebody like Nina who's, you know, lived here for a long time and continues to live here and has other property. Um, so I think that was a result that, based on the anecdotal, you know, this is why we're doing this, to try to prevent corporations from coming in here and buying six properties and renting them out as short-term rentals, as income-producing properties. That's not what we're actually seeing. But on the other hand, you have other people who have, you know, they may live on a, on a lot that has two houses on it, an older home and another home that they built later on, and, you know, what are they doing with that other home? And is it, is short-term rental make a, um, make sense for them? Um, or they have another home, but it's somewhere else in town, it's not on their property, so it can't be considered an ADU. So everybody's situation is different, but what I was a little bit surprised about was that the anecdotal, we're afraid that short-term rentals are taking away from long-term rentals because there are so many of them. There aren't that many of them. Um, and, um, corporations are coming in and buying everything out. None of, neither of those things ends up showing up in the data.
Within our jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction. I can't speak for Glenwood or county property or what have you.
Right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I think what we did to address the kind of corporate ownership issue is that we made it where the own, the licensee has to be a person, not a corporation, but we learned from our legal counsel that we couldn't discriminate against an LLC, which is a corporation that might own a property. And that's sometimes just a vehicle for somebody to own a property, even if they actually own it and.
Liability.
Yeah.
Protection.
So I think the. But if you want to talk with us, please, uh, come to the mic, introduce yourself and address us. Yeah. Well, we, so the mic here, we just can't take questions from the crowd, there's people online and we have a process.
Fair. My name's Colin Simon. I, I was just curious how a corporation or an XYZ LLC would then satisfy primary residents?
The grandfathered.
Only the grandfathered ones, guy. Okay. And then just the only other question I had was, what was, was anybody addressing unlicensed ones?
That's an enforcement issue that's next, next up.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Chris?
I, I guess it's in terms of policy, I'm feeling good. I feel like, um, we've, like, nipped the, you know, runaway train in the bud of, of second home, the, this thing we were afraid of, which was people coming and buying it upending the entire real estate valuation of the market with an expectation that that's now the way you pay for your house, is you have to short-term rental, because that's what the market will bear. Um, so I think that was good of knocking the legs out from underneath that as, as early as we could. Um, and so I think we're good, and I, it, we have so many other projects, I feel like maybe we should try to do sort of the minimum on this to some degree and let it ride for another two years or something, or until the complaints start to bubble up, um, you know? Um, and make this a little bit less of a, you know, exercise at this point, I don't.
I think that's fair.
I agree with Chris on that. I also think as we get some enforcement, so, these numbers are terrific and they're great to have, and thank you for them. But, um, let's see as we get some enforcement, if these numbers hold up.
Yeah, and have you been tallying the, the number of requests that come in, kind of like inquiry, inquiries?
There have been very few.
Okay.
Uh, we haven't, there have not been enough to tally.
I, I would think people who are staying off the radar are trying to just stay off the radar.
But with the new licensing software, that's going to make the enforcement a lot easier, correct? And they do the scrub or whatever they call it, where they, they look digitally at what all is available in our jurisdiction.
Who's advertising what, and then does it match with the license?
But we're not going to have that data for, what, six months a year down the road?
I don't think it's. It, it'll be sooner than that, that we, that we start with that, but it probably won't be complete.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree with Chris on this. I think uh, we put the tax in place. We got the licensing in place, now we're putting the enforcement in place, and I think this can be show for the time being, whether for another year or two years, I'd be fine with that.
Well, everybody's license is going to expire in December. And there's no vehicle in this ordinance for renewal because we were going to do another regulation, so we have to do something. It doesn't necessarily have to be a big change.
I'm just talking policy-wise, I think.
Right. So it sounds like Chris and Marty would be in favor, I'm, I'm thinking from what you just said of updating the, the resolution and the code to, to say, you know, licenses can be, um, reapplied for, whatever the, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Renewed, thank you, renewed. Um, and whether it's a one-year, a two-year term, I mean, I think we'd leave it to staff, if, if staff has feelings on that.
I personally think a two-year term, because I think we've given staff so many things to work with, give them a break for a year.
Yeah, and as Nina said, people book really far out, so you have to have some certainty there. And I think that those of you in the, uh, short-term rental kind of community here, um, can rest easy, that you're not hearing anything from this board right now that we're going to take a license away from anyone. If anything, I think the discussion in the future would be about potentially some kind of incremental expansions to take care of some of these, you know, these situations that, um, that don't fit the, the current regulation. Um, Lonnie or Luis, uh, do you agree with that direction?
I agree, yeah.
We, we're good for another year or two, we'll see, and I, I would say, as, we're going to have a moment where, once we start enforcing, we're going to see this group of people who probably will claim ignorance, that they didn't know that they needed to have a license, has to be grandfathered in, um, and we're going to have to kind of be prepared probably for quite a bit of.
Well, that, that's the question that I have is, at this point, many of those people will not qualify to have a license. They may be booked out for six months, but if they come in and apply for a license and they aren't in the HCC and they don't, um, and it's not a primary residence, are we grandfathering them?
No.
I think you have to have some level of responsibility, read the newspaper, know that we're doing things.
Because once we start, I don't know how many there are, let's say there's ten.
Once you make an exception, they've been noticed, they've been noticed in the paper, they've been noticed on the radio.
I'm not arguing the point, Marty, I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm just saying, to me, they've had their chance. And if they come when the new regulation goes into effect, and wait till six months after that, no. How about if I tell the IRS, oh, you know what, I can't pay my taxes now, I'll pay them December thirty-first, okay? I should be grandfathered in.
I'm just saying, it's going to come up. I want to know what the board, how the board felt about it.
Yeah, I think that's, Steph needs to, like.
Would the new regulations take into account the rental concerns?
Um, I mean, I would think that it would be a similar approach.
Well, we can look into it, I, I can work with Mark and we'll come in with a recommendation.
Okay.
Um, like, I don't know if I want to give too much ground there necessarily, I think Arne's shown that he can, like, do, do it with a personal relationship, and when we've built that trust where the property owner can take on the, you know, build that trusting relationship, I think that's, seems like a good stopgap measure for it, in my mind.
Yeah, I'm a little reluctant to open that up, and I mean, if part of what we're saying is we don't want staff to spend a lot of time on this, that one seems like a particularly time-consuming, like, confusing one. Um, so I think Steph needs clarity on whether we want them to explore that or not.
Well, if the, if the owner is willing to come in as the licensee, then it's not an issue.
Well, it's like, that would be in this case, because they would be, they wouldn't be grandfathered in, probably.
That's correct.
And then I think it's a no. I mean, I think it's that people can rent out bedrooms long-term, but, um, it sounds like we're, we're not ready to spend a lot of time on that. Um, do we want to explore any, or we're just going to continue our conversation at this point? Thank you. Um, do we want to explore any other exceptions? I mean, um, you know, I floated the idea of if we set some criteria and say, if you meet these criteria, it'd be subjective, that for why it can't, like, the, the lady that's the physician. Um, or do we want to just say, sorry, like, we're really going to phase out non-primary residents, um?
We're not phasing out non-primary residents.
Well, over time through.
It, it, I mean, if they want to buy the house, you know, and rent it out for six months out of the year, do you have an issue with that? I don't.
Well, they, we can't do anything about that, that's, that's.
But if they want to rent it out a week at a time.
Right.
Yeah, I think we do have an issue with that.
Okay, sounds like we're not, sounds like we just want to leave, leave it alone for now. And, uh, there's not consensus on any particular change, and that's fine with me, I just wanted to make sure that we're really clear, because that means that we're going to stay steady, um, unless there's a lot of new information that we get that, that we didn't have tonight, um, that for the next year plus, we're gonna, we're not going to touch it.
I still think we're getting data, you know, we're in the beginning of that, not the end of that.
The process seems pretty cut and dry, the way it stands.
Okay. And we don't have a room full of people here tonight saying, you know, I'm at a disadvantage because I can't get this permit in this scenario, so it doesn't seem to be a, a hugely widespread concern.
Maybe because they don't live here.
Yeah, right. Okay, any other thoughts on this topic? All right, thanks, everybody, for being here. This is really informative and really helpful for us to get your input. Thanks for everybody that was online. We're not quite adjourned yet, we have another item, but you're stay or, or go, or whatever you want to do, but we're going to move on from short-term rentals. Lauren, do you feel like staff has clear direction?
Yes.
Okay, we're sticking with it.
And I.
And we'll look at a two-year license renewal, okay? Um, and Jessica, for the record, that's all clear enough.
Yeah.
Sticking with it, and then a two-year license renewal term, um, and we're not getting more restrictive at this stage.
Yes.
Okay. Um, all right, this is always fun. So speaking of, we're focused on a lot of projects, as Marty said, um, Lauren, maybe hit a few highlights here, and I think this is just our opportunity to discuss these projects and make sure that we know what's going on. Steph's been very busy.
Okay, highlight, our town clerk and new planner are oriented and working well.
That's first.
I would like to say we're not working well together.
Right.
She's talking about him over there.
That's okay, we're just making jokes, Jared, it's okay, you can go on with your experience.
Um, uh, Eric scooted out of here tonight because the, uh, Girl Scouts are opening and dedicating the Hendrick Park Playground.
Oh, nice.
So he was here for the commissioners, and then he scooted out to that. Um, big things, Crystal River Restoration Project. Um, we've made a number of, um, alterations in our schedule for lots of reasons, um, but we're kind of being squeezed between the birds and the fish, right?
Welcome to the riparian zone.
Right, and, um, and then we have the high water in between.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, we have been working with and communicating with, um, uh, CPW and Fish and Wildlife and Audubon Society and, um, our project coordinators. And at this point, what's really changed is we're pushing the dates back. The contractor says that they can get this done, at least the, in the river work and the, the upland work that's not planting, um, next spring, um, in that short period of time, so we will begin, the contractor will begin setting up across the river on probably the seventh or the eighth of July, but no work will be done on the project until after the fifteenth of July. Um, and then I believe we have until the end of September, but it is going forward. We are working on public communication. I will let all of you know when Eric and I figure out um, exactly what this is going to look like, but I believe we're going to put a, um, a physical display of what's happening at the, for the Crystal River Restoration Project in the lobby, um, so that people can come in and really look at the map and not have to look at everything online, um, and talk about, you know, how we're really walking our values with regard to ecology and the environment and wildlife and, um, and river health. So that, that's a big thing, and there's been a lot of conversations about that recently. Um, and we sat down with, uh, four members of Audubon yesterday, and I think we all walked out of there feeling like we were on the same page, and, um, we all knew what was going to happen. So that, that's very, very good.
Just pause there for one second, any questions about that one? Because that's one where it's been in the paper, there's been a lot of, you know, emails and, and different things. Eric has, has fielded a lot of concerns, and, and I've said it so many times, just he's, he's done it with so much grace and, uh.
Some of them were quite nasty.
Yeah, um, but he, he turned it from, you know, maybe some nasty comments into, okay, there's a, there's a legitimate concern at the core of this about bird habitat and, um, and dealt with that really well, and fish spawning. So we always knew our dates on the fish spawning, I think we just thought we could do the upland work before that, and now we shifted the upland work till.
Right, well, we were going to start earlier with the river work, and then we could get in the river because it was too high and too fast, so.
Twenty-two hundred.
I love your idea, Lauren, of, um, of display here. It might be too much to ask because it's a short-term project, but I wonder if the same thing could be replicated and put on site. You know, maybe not, but it might be a question worth asking if there's some way to, but probably not because of weather and everything.
I think, I think it'll just get destroyed.
Or even something simple, like a, a QR code, scan this to open up a.
Oh, that's interesting.
Right, like, because people are, again, as much as we've talked about this, I guarantee you, the minute a tractor shows up out there, people are going to flip and they're. people are gonna flip and they're not gonna know it's gonna have been something that they feel like was not part of the public process. So some way to get a sense of, oh, and whether it goes to just the map or whether it's, you know, something that's on the website that's a really clear, here are the dates, here's the planning, here's what we shifted, birds, fish, you know, I think that would go a long way.
Preserve my front door, please.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Great. Thank you for that update.
Uh, no problem. Whole project working on some contracts um and really trying to cost the conceptual design. Because eight million. It's like, are we doing a capital campaign? Are we going after other grants? Can we do the project for what we have budgeted? That's what they're trying to figure out right now.
Do we have, I mean, are we still on kind of, there was like the fast timeline of.
We're not on the fast timeline.
Okay.
But the pool will be open full season this year.
Till Labor Day, essentially, is that the general?
The pool will not be open. We do not anticipate that the pool will be open next year. We anticipate that we will lose that season.
Okay.
That demolition will happen in the spring and then they will start construction and the pool will be ready for the following year.
Okay, so we don't anticipate starting demolition this fall?
Correct.
Okay, that's a big, that's a big shift. That's good for all of us to know.
Well, you know, they were speaking about the capital campaign and we gotta get it going.
They they need a design first. They need something to show people.
Okay.
Um and I think that's, that they don't have, they're not there yet.
Okay.
But um but they're very conscious of that. Thanks, Marty. I have a call into Art Space. I don't know if they have contracted yet with the design team. Um I know that they were trying to put it all together and I haven't heard anything in two weeks, so I have a call into them and I will let you know what hap- what happens with that. Um the good news is that we, and I know you all know this, got the um Energy Impact Grant for two hundred thousand dollars, which goes towards our six hundred and fifty thousand that we need for this full couple of years of pre-development work.
That was the DOLA, right?
That was DOLA.
Does it feel like that project's still on track for their dark timeline?
Yep.
Okay.
It's they, their timelines for the pre-development are pretty broad.
Okay.
Um so I'm I'm not really concerned about that. The multi-mobility, multimodal mobility plan. What are we calling it?
M three A.
M three P or something.
How about mobility?
Right.
Mobility.
That is um gonna really focus on public engagement throughout the summer, and so they're working on putting a plan together for that. Um we have, as I said the other day, we have a building official coming in July twenty-fifth.
And I think just to back up a little bit with Latino outreach, I know um Luis did some work there, and it sounds like we've decided to just roll that into our boards and commission update. Right? Like, we're gonna establish the commission.
Yeah, the um Valley Settlement is gonna help with getting a questionnaire out.
Okay.
To uh but the things, the thing is, they really don't get start, start rolling until um August because a lot of their staff is gone, but we're, we'll find other channels to really get more data and more information and really applicants that want to be a part of it.
Great. I think that's fine. That we're gonna, we've got the mission, we've got the structure, it'll be consistent with our other structures. And so we'll, we'll move forward with that and then we'll get people on it and then we'll start.
Um I'm gonna skip down to short-term rental tax and bag fee implementation. That has been quite the struggle. Um not on our part. We have been ready for months. Um it's our software, it's our financial software and the processes that they have to go through to get the forms together. And, you know, your comment about businesses can't function because they don't have the personnel, because the people can't, I don't know why they don't have the personnel and there's so much turnover. But there's been so much turnover, we worked with four different representatives that we basically had to get almost done and then go back and do half, half of the work over again. That is in its final phases to get uh not the short-term rental implementation of the online platform, but the tax documents and and the bag fee implementation on the website so that people can pay those things. They should be done, I think, this week for um a June twenty and July twenty filing. Um so that's, that's been a real, that's been a real effort. Um the IECC, the Energy Code. We have some, I have a whole stack on my desk of proposed amendments and issues that we're gonna have to talk about before we adopt the IECC and what have you, but we're this close to having a building official. Really prefer to do that with building officials, so I'm sort of on hold on that one.
Could I back you up? Just a couple of the ADU regulation review and code changes that says in process. I don't know if Jared wants to comment on that or if you do, but um I don't feel like we've given a lot of direction on that. I'm just curious if that's something P and Z has started working on or.
Um we're queuing up a uh work session with them, um either the last meeting in July or um the first meeting in August. So we've been doing a lot of internal staff um kind of review of what other communities have for ADUs. Um and so hopefully, once we get some feedback from them, we can bring that up to you guys, give you some thoughts, get some additional feedback, and then hopefully kick off a public review process of what the regulations or modifications could be.
Okay, and is it clear what the goal is? Do they, do you and the P and Z have enough clarity from us to why we're asking for that?
Um yes, and and no, I think part of it will be, part of the the work session is to make sure that we have some additional clarity. I think there's um from from listening to a few other boards and commissions, it seems like there might be some confusion as to what our regulations currently are and what they currently allow and um how that relates to private covenants, PUDs, things like that, that have additional restrictions on what ADUs can and where where they can and cannot be located. So um you know, hopefully the work session kind of presenting that information, asking for some additional feedback will kind of surface those so we can draft some code modifications.
I think our goal, correct me if I'm wrong, uh fellow board members, after that discussion about that House bill that moved through the the state legislature that was, you know, streamlining a lot of things, that we said, well, we might pluck a few things out of this and consider them. And so when I think about ADUs, it's, we want to make that easier. And in the state law, it was, and the Garfield County Commission just told us it's a use by right. And there's no parking requirements. That was in the state bill. Like, I'd like us to consider those things and there will be pushback. Um but as far as a way to add some smaller housing units within the fabric of your community that don't radically change the character, seems like that's it and it's it. I I my understanding is communities that have gone really toward the, you know, more permissive side of that and said it's a use by right and there's no they haven't had a huge boom of these. It's not like suddenly, you know, I think people are always afraid. It's like AD or short-term rentals. We're afraid that if we don't regulate something, it's gonna proliferate kind of out of control, but you know, it's still hundreds of thousands of dollars to build an ADU, and it's not something everybody's gonna have the means or the space or the desire to do. So I think we could become much more permissive, allow them to be bigger. Consider kind of everything that would have a goal of increasing rental housing stock. Is that? I don't want to speak for the board unless that's the board, but I I think that if we ask P and Z to review ADU regs and we don't have a clear goal, then it's gonna be a really confusing process.
I think it's kind of irrelevant if it doesn't take into consideration the PUD question. Like, is it just gonna be another
Right.
thing that we're applying to the little part of a town that's not a PUD? Or is it gonna be something we're gonna try to bring to these owners' associations and say, hey, guys, you guys now can vote as an association, you can loosen up your own regulations on yourselves.
Or can we preempt those that like state law is trying to do, which I don't know that we can.
Yeah, can we preempt those? I don't know. That's a question. Do we want to preempt them?
I can put a small home in my backyard.
Wheel Circle needs a little, a few more people.
It does, and we don't need parking spaces.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to check in.
Yeah, no, thank you for that.
There, do you want to talk about design, historic design, um preservation design guidelines?
Certainly.
Before I call you back up?
Yeah, certainly. So um we we applied for a grant, and I believe we let you guys know that we um unfortunately didn't receive a grant to expand the um historic design guidelines to include a chapter on the um Old Town Residential Zone District. So um we've been working with the Historic Preservation Commission to kind of uh look at alternatives, you know, are there things that exist within our current codes? Um are there minor changes that could be done to the current historic design guidelines to maybe address some of what they believe are the biggest threats to the um OTR? So we're working with them on some of those different uh solutions um and and seeing what, what exists there. Um I think unfortunately, the the cost of kind of public outreach and going through the public process is gonna be prohibitive for them to pursue um with the limited budget allocation that they currently have to to expand those um design guidelines. A lot of the quotes we're getting were somewhere in the twenty thousand dollar range, and that wasn't so much to actually write design guidelines, but it was to attend public meetings, prepare information for public meetings, ask the community what they think, if these guidelines or these additional regulations are eligible. Um so see, I think that's a quick, quick update on the historic preservation design guidelines.
And and I would just say if it's a budgetary constraint, but it's a real priority for that commission and that we've given them some direction on, you know, maybe we consider it, whether it's a mid-year request or whether it's going into the next budget cycle, like I don't know. I guess I don't want something, if it's a really important body of work, to be held back by a a price tag that's a little over what we budgeted or a lot of.
And and it's something that we've expressed to them is, let's dive a little bit deeper into what those issues are.
Yeah.
Um and see if we can't maybe revise requests for proposals, if you will, um and get maybe a more realistic number. And then if we need to come back and ask for additional budget from the trustees either this year or next year, you know, we might have a little more data supporting what what the the true need is um versus kind of a spaghetti on a wall exercise.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thanks, Jared.
Thanks, Jared.
The next thing is the Nettle Creek Hydro Project.
Can't believe we got no bits.
We had four contractors come to the pre-bid meeting, all of whom said they were interested, and then no one submitted a bid. So we have gone back to them to find out why, and two of them told us they just were so busy they couldn't get it done. So we have rebid, the bid is, the RFP is already out. And I believe the deadline is June thirtieth, and we'll see what we get. Um if we get a decent bid by the end of the month, we can, we feel that we can still accomplish the project this year. So that's, that's where we are with that. Um the next two items are short-term rental oriented and I think you want me to talk about that anymore. Recycle Implementation. Recycle is, they have a um an office now and a shop um that they're working on to get it fit out for a more permanent installation um on Buggy Circle. And um we have done our um the bases for all of the kiosks around town. And you'll see some of the, some of the signs up, um recycle station coming, skip, et cetera. The July Rafta meeting. I believe we'll do a ribbon cutting on the first station out here um across from Town Hall. But the stations will not be operational until probably the first week of August, where we have all of them built and then they can kick it off and open it up. We did not want to based on supply chain issues and everything else, to open the recycle stations the day before Mountain Fair. That was not, we didn't fill it though. This is a smart move. So um so we're planning for the first week of August, um but we'll know more in a couple of weeks when we figure out if all the equipment's here.
I'm really sad I'm gonna miss that ribbon cutting.
When is it?
To do another one. We'll do another one before you then.
Is that thing?
I think it's the thirteenth of July.
Right.
Okay, well, that that I'd be here for. If it's the first Thursday, then it's the sixth, which is, I think, is their usual date, but maybe it's the second Thursday.
I thought it was the second Thursday.
Yay.
Um I will double check on that. Um Highway one thirty-three irrigation replacement project. The bid was outrageously high, so we're fixing at the moment instead of replacing. Um that does not give us the benefit of the water savings, the timer issues and all it, all of the upgrades that we were going to do, but for now, we're just sort of holding and see what happens. Um as we are sort of doing on the A Street project. They closed Merrill on Monday. They're working on that first bulb out. You know, we'll, we may rebid the project, see how far we get, and then rebid for the rest of it in early spring and see what we get. And then we'll make another decision as to, you know, do we have enough money for this or are we gonna continue to poke away at it internally? Uh do you have any questions about the sewer line replacement stuff? Continued efforts on the roundabout, basically subsurface utility engineering work. You know, hopefully, when, as soon as that's done, we'll be talking to C dot and trying to figure out what this is gonna look like and what the timing's going to be. Um the design's almost complete for Highway one thirty-three crossing at Cowan. C dot concurs, the everybody's on board with the project. We think it it'll get done this summer. So um downtown are possibilities. We really haven't gone there yet. We met with them, but we haven't really explored.
Send you a proposal because they said they were going to.
No, they want some information from us in order to send us a proposal which we honestly have just been too busy to get them. So I will probably get that to them in the next couple of weeks, and I'm sure we'll have some sort of estimate of what would it cost to do this? And then we'll go back and say we can't afford that, and they'll come back and say, well, we could do this instead. I think that'll probably go on for a couple of months and we'll see where we are.
And it means that we won't have access to the Rafta First Last Mile Mobility Fund for twenty twenty-four, right? Because that was a June deadline. Although maybe they'd be open to a late submission for something like.
Potentially. We'll, we'll just have to see how that works out. Employee handbook um update because of staff turnover and finance. We haven't gotten very far on it, but I'm putting together a survey for staff. And um we will be working on this late summer and hope to have some recommended changes as part of the budget for this year. We didn't get the FLMD grant for the Chacos Park Master Plan. So Eric's working on an RFP for plan development for the fall. Okay, so inclusionary zoning requirements. This is my question from board. It's not my update for you. We talked when we were doing the housing plan and everything else about whether our twenty percent number is the right number. My question is, do you want staff, what do you want staff to do? Do you want us to work on that right now? Do you want us to bring you what everybody else is doing and you know, should we change this this summer or or not? I just don't know what the board wants the timing to be on that. We started the conversation, but we didn't really go anywhere with it.
My only reason for waiting would be if we think that that uh technical assistance grant that the Regional Housing Coalition has, which I believe is doing some like code analysis and bringing back some themes and best practices, if we want to wait on that.
What is the time on that?
I don't know.
They are, I think we're gonna meet with them next week, but they're still gathering data.
Well, maybe that could be the direction is, if you're gonna meet with them, could you find out from them, will their recommendations include? Or not recommendations, I don't think they're gonna tell us what to do, but are they gonna do all this work for us essentially? And if we wait, what's their timeline? And if they say, no, we're not looking at inclusionary zoning, we're looking at other stuff, and probably ADUs also, right? Like. And if they say, no, we're not looking at inclusionary zoning, we're looking at other stuff and probably ADUs also, right? Like, are they gonna do a lot of this legwork for us? And if so, can we line up with their timelines?
Yeah, what are their findings and that'll give us.
Just to say.
So maybe we won't, we won't plan anything, but we'll start asking some questions of them.
I mean, I kind of like.
We're not doing double duty.
I kind of almost like August fifteenth as a placeholder, just so that we don't kind of forget to
Mm hmm.
to come back to it, but I'd say pending their timeline and their scope of work. And if they say, oh, yeah, we're gonna have that in October. Okay, fine. But if they say, no, we're, that's not the same thing. Let's go ahead with it.
And those are really all the updates that I
Those what?
Have for now.
Where do we, what positions to be vacant?
Well, we have, our Public Information Officer is vacant, our um Board and Commission's clerk position is vacant.
What about our code enforcement?
Um. We. You mean in the police?
Yeah.
Oh, um, I was gonna say, we don't really have a code enforcement. But um, we there's a lot of hiring going on in the police right now. Um, I don't know that we have a permanent person in code enforcement. We filled the position that Shayha had. We have two potential new officers who still have to go to the academy, so we won't see them until early next year. Um. But, excuse me, they're very promising candidates. Um. I know that the pool is looking for swim instructors. Um, but for the most part, it's really those, you know, couple of police spots and um and the part, in the part-time positions at Town Hall.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. I mean, that's a lot of progress, right?
No, it is a lot. I congratulate you on that because I know it's been a major challenge. And when I say that everyone's so deep for people, you know, I'm not making that.
That's right. Mm hmm.
I don't know what happened. People don't wanna work anymore.
Well, they don't wanna work the same way anyway. Um, yeah.
Don't work two days a week. They wanna work from home. Work has become less important in their lives.
But you were sort of saying that you were having trouble with trying to get people to do a part-time job.
Part-time is very tricky because in order to get benefits, you need multiple jobs.
Yeah.
Um, and some people, they're, they're really not looking for multiple jobs. And even multiple jobs, you have two twenty-hour a week jobs, you might not get health insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's really, that's tricky and I, um. You know, I've talked to the mayor and I've talked to some of the staff about, you know, being open to can we combine some things and make those two part-time positions into one full-time something? Um, and we're open to that, but we haven't changed the job.
That's still my instinct is like, can we smoosh them together and make it maybe a more I'm still like this, like in community engagement coordinator or something, as opposed to the Public Information Officer sounds very like officious and town sort of like.
Well, I mean, that's a good point, Chris, but
Which is probably good in an emergency situation.
Even if it's community engagement coordinator or PIO or what have you, that's a fairly highly skilled job. Where the Board and Commission's clerk is not. So I ha- I offered both of those jobs to somebody who was looking for something full-time and she really was not interested in doing minutes.
Uh huh.
Like, which would have been
Well, I think.
You know, ten hours a week or what have you.
Well, I don't know. I, in my opinion, would be, that would be an interesting candidate, which is try to find somebody who does have the interest in taking in feedback and stuff and not just being a a microphone. Um, and I feel like somebody could actually get inspired by that concept of being kind of like the the conduit between, and even that person maybe just didn't see the you know, if it's, if it's pitched as, yeah, you're just taking notes, that is kind of the case, but Kay relays quite a bit of information between the different boards.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
And she's very valuable.
More administrative than it is.
Yeah.
Highly skilled position.
And it might take somebody with like creativity to realize there's like tools out there now that you can use with AI to just makes notes taking like they're, they're basically doing it for you, like, you know, so.
Does hallucinate occasionally, though, right?
Super, I mean, there's like, I mean, there's a lot. There's, I mean, we use Supernatural all the time now and it's like, just like, nobody has to take notes. It just does it for you. You just go in, you clean them up and, yeah, check it out. It's pretty cool.
Hang a second here. But but part of it is, it's not just minutes. It's working with the board chairs and doing the agendas and you know, figuring out who's gonna be at what meeting and, you know, all of those kinds of things, but that's still an administrative, it's an administrative job.
I was just saying, if that was like the one thing that's like, I don't wanna take notes, like, well.
And you were.
Right, right.
And then missed, you're saying there's a distinction there between an administrative job and a sort of what?
Communications job.
Communications job, okay.
Depending on the skills of the individual. I mean, it may be that somebody is a communications person, but they're also a graphic designer.
Uh huh.
That person, this is what this particular person was. She's not interested in an administrative
Uh huh.
job. She wants the artistic, creative outreach piece.
Yeah.
So.
I think you've heard some ideas here and it's your job to put those together in whatever way makes sense to you or not. Yes, and to to continue to hire as as best you can. Lonnie, did you have something?
Yeah, just one, um for Lauren, during the closure next year, now that that's been established as having to be necessary. Um, are you considering maybe an alternative pool opportunity for our community with a a neighboring facility or?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Um, I don't think they've really gotten that far yet.
Okay. Um, and then just out of curiosity, um Art Space is doing an open house on Thursday, as you've probably seen in Ridgeway.
Trying to figure out whether I can actually pull that off.
Yeah, I was looking at it too. I would love to see it, but I've got another, I've got a conflict on Thursday evening. But it might be an opportunity to touch base with those guys if you've been having a hard time getting.
I haven't been having a hard time. I just haven't heard from them, so I reached out. No, they're very, they're very responsive.
Ridgeway.
Ridgeway is having their grand opening. Of their. Their, yeah, space to create. Great.
I wanna bring us to a close. Uh, any other updates on projects? Okay, any other questions about those updates?
One thing on the pool, I sent Marty and you and maybe you a thing that was just a from our walk we made with all the trees and I just hope that that gets to the pool consultant and I think Quinn was, last night was gonna talk to his wife as well, so. Um, but I think trying to think about the the tree landscape uh as that, at the beginning of that process, not once we've already.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, anybody gonna be out next week?
I'll be gone.
Okay. Okay. Um, next week, we're gonna review the code changes for the boards and commissions, which we've already discussed, so it's probably pretty straightforward. We'll establish the Latino Advisory Board. Um, we have a couple other fairly small administrative items, so it might be a pretty quick meeting. We'll see if anything else gets added.
I have a question that got posted on the Zoom meeting. From an anonymous attendee, in the future, would there be any properties that with long and short term rentals could get a tax credit? For example, renting a bottom floor long-term and short-term rentals upstairs.
I don't think we're ready for that.
I kind of assumed that, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that that had been posted.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, everybody. Meeting is adjourned.